Good evening, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County, July, August, the 2nd, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Gaye Morris to lead us in an invocation. Reverend Morris, thank you. As I've mentioned in the past, it's once again nice that we can be able to do this in, in open instead of over Zoom these days. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you, and good morning. As we place ourselves in an attitude of prayer and reflection, we know that every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their sacred hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that leads to this moment. And we acknowledge that we gather on the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the tribal peoples who hunted and fished along the ocean waters from Corolla to Hatteras, and who farmed and lived in the forested soundside of the Outer Banks. And I invite you to join in prayer as we gather today in the presence of the holy and infinite source of love, mercy, justice, and compassion, who give thanks for this day and this assembly, inspired by each other's presence. Today may we heed the call of our own hearts where love and truth, caring and justice are born. We must heed the call of others gathering together for some greater purpose, asking for insight in which we see further than our own needs. In considering issues that divide us, let us see beyond the barriers we build to cloak our fears. God of many names, move in us as we care for and about this county, that this may more perfectly be a place for all to live and work in safety and loving kindness, work through us in justice to redress the presence of injustice, and come to our community of many faiths as a voice of conscience and caring. May we help each other to make a reality of the possibilities we dream, to do our best to create the community we desire, to practice the truth as we know it, and to serve with wisdom. May we be the ones who make it so. Blessed be, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Morris. May we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What a nice crowd we have this morning. First time we've seen this many folks in, in the building in almost a year and a half now. So, it's, uh, thank you all for being here this morning. At this time, I'll turn the meeting back over to the county manager.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Item one on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, county manager. I only have two things this morning. One, one is, I'm gonna, the second item I'm gonna talk about is asking the public to search their soul and do some more research and, and maybe encourage them to take a step, a bold step. And I'll mention that in just a moment. But I don't know how many of you have been watching the Olympics this past week, but it's been very, very exciting to watch those who represent our country at the Olympics and share that American spirit. It's been very uplifting to see those folks who have won medals standing on the podium when they played a national anthem with their hand over their heart. It's pretty awesome. Proud of those kids and young adults. So, I look forward to watching it some more this week. The second item I want to talk to you about is, I'd like to make a plea to the public. I want to focus on COVID. Last year and a half, it's been very difficult for the entire country. It's been very difficult for here, us here in Dare County as well. And I know everyone is over it. We're tired of it. We're, uh, we want to move on. Our county, just like the rest of the country, our Health and Human Services Department has reported, as of July 30, reported 103 new cases of COVID in just five days between July 26 and 30. It's an average of about 20 new cases a day. Thirty-seven of those 103 cases are reported involving non-residents, while 66 of those cases involve residents. Eighty-three cases were reported for the full seven days prior to July 19th and 25th through the 25th. And just a little over a month ago, we were only at seven cases. So, we've had a spike as well, just like the rest of the country. My plea to the public is reevaluate COVID-19. I respect the fact that if you choose not to get the vaccination, but I also would like for you to weigh the pros in taking the vaccination. I encourage you to do it. I believe the majority of, I believe all of my board members have done it. I've done it. Thank God, knock on wood. I've not had any side effects, but I believe it's in my best interest to have taken it. And I hope that the public will reevaluate their stance and, and take the vaccine. If not, continue to wear a mask in public groups and outings, and practice your social distancing, and certainly continue to wash your hands. So, that's a plea that I have to those out there this morning that have not been vaccinated. And please, please give it your full consideration, and, and that's all I'll ask of you at this time. So, with that, county manager, that completes chairman's comments today.
Chairman, that brings us to item two on the agenda. Uh, this is our opportunity to recognize our employees for their dedicated service to the county. Today's service pins will represent 170 years of service by 10 of Dare County employees. First on our list is George Fokler, and Sheriff Doug Dowd is here to present that.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I got two for the price of one this morning.
Yeah, you do.
Got a tall, got a tall one and a four-legged one. Both of them are valuable. Very valuable. This is George Fokler, and this is Galaxy. George has been with us 10 years. George came from the Maryland State Police, and he was retired from up there, and a great find for us. We couldn't have done better. George lives on the north end of the county. George is involved in everything. George got a little age on him and still wants to be a young guy, and does it, and does it very well. If we've got something going on, George is gonna be involved in it. George is on the tact team. George rode the motorcycle for a while, did a good job on it, didn't wreck, went to school, made it through two weeks of school, the Highway Patrol School, and that's a very, very hard school to pass. Did it with flying colors. But I told him when he got the dog, if he wanted the dog, and this dog is an explosive dog, so if he walks up on anybody, we're gonna move them out of here pretty quick. Hopefully, we were there when he came in. But, um, so we told George, said, you gotta give up something. So, George gave up the motorcycle. He can still jump on it when he wants to, but he took the dog. If anybody knows George, George loves every kind of animal there is. George has a duck at his house. He might not want me telling all this, but I'm gonna do it anyway, just to show you the kind heart he's got, and he treats everybody the same. Anybody loves animals, gonna love a human. So, he does, he, he shows that all the time. He's got a servant's heart, and he does it very well. But George has got a duck he keeps, he's got turtles, he's got about nine cats in his house that have torn it completely up. I don't think he's got a piece of furniture in there. They've tunneled through the sofas. He's got a great wife, or she'd already kicked him out and the cats, but she loves the cat and she loves the dog. George is just that kind of guy. You can ask George to do anything, George is gonna get it done. And he treats the public the same way. I've not had a complaint on George since he's been here. When he first moved in, he befriended a guy out in the, where he lived at, in the north end of the county, and they became fast friends. He was an older gentleman. He passed away a couple of years ago. George even spoke at his, uh, when he, when he was, or did his obituary for him. George is just that kind of guy. George works hard. He's always nice to be around. He's been here 10 years. I hope he stays here a whole lot longer. The dog's got a lot of good life in him, so we're gonna make sure George stays until the dog gets out. And we thank you very much, buddy, for what you do. Very proud to have you with us, and here's your, your team. Got a hug.
I think you remembered where that.
Next, we have Roy Ambrose.
She did, she did. She was looking for it.
Roy's a detention officer. He's getting his 10-year pin. He couldn't get here today, but we congratulate him on his dedicated 10 years of service to the county. Officer Ambrose, who's affectionately called Chief from the staff and the inmates alike, is a lifelong resident of Dare County. He performs protective service work and ensures the safety and security of the inmates within the county jail. He can always be counted on to do anything which is asked of him without hesitation, and on his time off, he enjoys spending time on the water with his wife Melissa and their children. Thank you, Roy, for your 10 years of service to Dare County as a detention officer, and we hope we get a bunch more. Next, we have Orman Mann, Orman Mann Jr. Orman is a senior facility maintenance tech. He too is getting his 10-year pin and could not be here today. Orman oversees the day-to-day maintenance of the detention center. This means he's a plumber, electrician, a painter, and they all point repairman. He's a hard worker who's always willing to come in to work at a moment's notice to tend to something which is broken or is in need of repair. Orman is just as dedicated to his family and enjoys spending time away with his wife, Rebecca, and their three children. Thank you, Orman, for your 10-year service, and again, we hope we have many more from you as well. Next on our list is Brett Barnett. He's an emergency med tech paramedic, and his 15-year pin will be presented by Chief
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners.
Thomas.
I'd like to introduce Brett Barnett. His given name is Thomas, that's why you hear that, but he goes by Brett. Brett first started as a first responder in the state of Maryland also. He was with Easton Volunteer Fire Department as a junior member. He got his EMT when he was in high school, that, when he was a senior, which was 2007, and he volunteered for several years. And during that time, he got to ride on Maryland State Trooper Six, which is one of the Maryland State helicopters, and he got bit by the bug. Decided that's what his career goal was, is to be a flight medic. In 2009, he moved to Hatteras and with the intention of getting a job with Dare County EMS, because we checked all the boxes. He got to do EMS, he was at the beach that he loved, and we had a helicopter. So, that was the, his goals. So, he volunteered for the department for a couple of years before we had part-time employees, and he also volunteered with Hatteras Island Rescue Squad and Hatteras Island Fire Department. In 2011, he was hired full-time with us as an EMT intermittent, intermediate. In 2013, he was promoted to paramedic because he had attained that certification. And in 2017, he competed with our internal assessment for the positions on Dare Med Flight and was chosen to go over to Dare. So, I would like to thank Brett for his 10 years with us, and he enjoys being here. His, when he's off, his son, who's five years old, Grayson, keeps him quite busy. And so, Brett, thank you very much for your 10 years of service here.
Thank you, Brett.
Next, if Pamela Kaiser would come up. She's a community health technician, and she's receiving her 15-year pin from Mandy Ferguson and Sue Hewitt.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. So, this is Pam. She's been serving our county as an in-home aide for the last 15 years. For the last three years, she's been serving as a lead aide. So, her typical job duties consist of assisting our elderly and disabled population with essential errands, light housekeeping, and personal care, just to keep them safe and supported within their home. She also steps up to help precept and orient our new hires. She not only completes those job duties, but she always goes above and beyond. She gives 110% all the time. She really does make a tremendous difference to our program and our entire agency. She's been found assisting clients troubleshooting their electric wheelchairs to make sure that they are able to get around safely. She assists setting up for the DHHS board meetings and strongly advocating for her clients to assist them for a better quality of life. She helps prepare for hurricanes, even when not asked to, and endless other tasks that are not asked of her. You can always find her walking around the agency, asking anyone if they need help with anything, especially during the construction. In Pam's personal life, she enjoys spending time with her husband, Mark, who she has been with for 39 years, and her son, Mason. She enjoys crafting, reading, and making the community a better place with her acts of service. Pam is a huge asset to our program, and I hope she will stay with us for many, many, many years to come. So, thank you, Pam, for 15 years.
Next, we have Travis Rhodehaven. Rhodehaven, Travis works with Parks Maintenance, and he's getting his 15-year pin today. Travis's supervisor, Greg Fiala, congratulates him on his 15-year service pin and notes he's a valued member of the turf maintenance team. His continued contributions are vital for their operation. All of our organizational achievements are made possible because of employees like Travis who are hardworking and value a true teamwork atmosphere. Travis started as an activity coordinator with Parks and Recreation and was soon promoted to an activity specialist. He wanted to broaden his knowledge of all aspects of park recreation, so he took a job as a park maintenance worker. This allowed him to see both sides of parks and rec, operations. After a couple of years, Travis was again promoted to a park maintenance crew leader. Four years later, Travis wanted to gain more knowledge, so he transferred over to the turf maintenance department, where he continues to thrive every day. When he's not working, Travis enjoys fishing, hunting, and spending time with his daughter. Thank you, Travis, for your hard work and team spirit and dedication, and for the 15 years you've given to Dare County, and we hope you have many more. Next is Dustin Raspus. Dustin has 15 years of service. Dustin's a very thorough about the quality and details of his work and conscientious in his job and task performance. He's become very knowledgeable within the distribution system in his daily work in locating water lines for the underground utility construction work. Dustin is never hesitant to assist coworkers during work hours or after-hours on emergency water line leak repairs, and can operate all the equipment used within the department. He provides professional service and presents a positive disposition when interacting with customers. Dustin holds a C distribution certificate. Thank you, Dustin, for your 15 years of service to Dare County. Again, we hope you have many more. Next, oh, we have Mary Ballance. Next, she's to get her 20-year pin. She can't be here today, or is she here today?
No, she had a seat.
Okay, she can't be here today, and so Trey's not here, and we'll do that at our next meeting. Next is Pam Midge. Most of you know Pam. Pam's IT administrative assistant. Today, she would get her 25-year pin. Pam's, and Pam is celebrating her 25, 25th year with the county. She started with the county when the IT department was known as data processing. Over the past 25 years, she has been responsible for managing a number of different tasks, including cellphone billing, updates to the county's various websites, elections, and help desk support, as well as assigning addresses in the unincorporated areas of Dare County. During the past year, Pam stepped up and volunteered to learn the AV system here in the boardroom to support the increased number of live-stream meetings during the pandemic. In addition, Pam also sits on a number of employee committees with the goal of improving the county services for the citizens and employees of Dare County. Thank you, Pam, for your hard work over the past 25 years and your dedication to 25, to Dare County, and we hope you have many more years as well. And then finally, we have Lisa Heath. Lisa's a dance program supervisor. Today, she's getting a 35-year pin. We don't see many 35-year pins. And Tim White's here to present that.
Welcome, Lisa. Tim, good morning.
Thank you.
Is there a honor if I invite her husband Aubrey?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I was unexpected.
This is Aubrey Heath, Lisa's husband, and this is Lisa Heath. As Bobby said, she's been with us 35 years. And yesterday, when I was looking at some of the things he's accomplished, I calculated approximately how many young ladies she came in contact with over the 35 years, it's 5,200 children.
Woo, wow.
And that's quite an accomplishment. I can tell you that probably 5,199 of those children love her. They come by our office all the time just to see her, talk to her, and if, and if you know Lisa, she's full of energy. She comes to work every day, and I mean every day, with a smile, never in a bad, bad, bad mood, and I don't know if it's because of Aubrey or because of me, but...
Because I know where I'm going. My wonderful office is...
But anyways, she comes every day with a smile. She's, she's never, never, when I've asked her to do something outside of Parks and Rec, and she said no. In fact, she comes into me quite often and says, is there something you need me to do outside of teaching dance and things like that? You can't have a better, better leader of our dance program than Lisa Heath. Some of the things she's done, you know, in the last six to eight months, she's worked, just to give you an example, what she does outside of Parks and Rec, she's worked in the COVID unit, calling people about making sure they, you know, they go to their appointments, making sure they get their second, second shot. I know a couple of weeks ago, she wa, she went with you down to the Beach Nourishment. That was something that I, that she actually heard me talking about it. I said, I need somebody to drive a van, and she stepped right up. So, that's the kind of person she is. She's done meals on wheels during the COVID, COVID crisis. She's just, she's just a wonderful person, very compassionate. When I, when I was going through my initial cancer treatment, she called me off and came by, prepared me meals, and she's just a great person, and I'm so glad to have her. And I, and I know I can't ask you for 35 more years, but can we have five more?
I don't know.
Anyway, congratulations.
I'll stay as long as you stay. How about that?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to, and also, of course, I'd like to thank Aubrey for being here, but I'd also like to thank my staff, or not my staff, but Sissy, that is our administrative secretary, and Carolyn Norman for being here, because it takes teamwork, and we have a wonderful office, and I just want to thank everybody.
Congratulations, Lisa. I, I, it's, it's quite a record. It's, it's quite a record, and I commend you for that, and, and I thoroughly enjoyed being with you that day we took the trip down. She drove, she drove the task force down to see the seven hotspots, and I was in the passenger side, she was in the driver's seat, but she, she's a burst of energy, and, and I couldn't thank you enough for doing that for us.
I got a little taste of just what your day is like, just sitting beside you.
Yeah, she did. She looked at me one time and says, does that phone ever stop ringing? So, but...
I'd like to say I hope my dad's watching from heaven, because he'd be so proud of me to have this accomplishment.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Lisa's father used to have my job. He was the Parks and Rec, or Public Services Director before Cliff had the job. So, he, and he also worked at Elizabeth City for, I don't know, 25 years, 30 years, something like that. So, he spent all his life in Parks and Recreation.
Wow.
So, he's an ex-employee. Before I sit down, I want to just mention one thing. I want to thank all of you, Bobby, Dave, Sally, and whoever else worked on our budget. I want to thank you for what you did for us this year, all of my employees. I don't know who was pushing for Parks and Rec, but I got everything I asked for, and I just want to thank you. All the people that work under me are very appreciative. When I, when I told some of the people that are getting a new van, they, you know, they were ecstatic, things like that, new tractors, new lawn mowers, things like that. And I, and I know that it took a lot of hard work, and I know Dave had to look under some rocks to find some of the money, but, but, but thank you all for doing that, and I appreciate it very much.
Absolutely, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Lisa must have started when she was like two. She's touched the lives of many, many girlies.
Chairman, that brings us to item three on the agenda, which is public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time, it's been since I've heard public comment. If you have public comment this morning and you've not signed up, raise your hand, I'll recognize you. When I do, please come to the podium. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light up on the podium that comes on when your time begins. There's a yellow light that will come on when there's about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. On our sign-up sheet, and I apologize because I can't read this, it looks like RS Abalor?
Alabac.
I'm sorry, Alabac, please come up.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Richard Alabac. I'm a property owner in Duck, and I'm here to speak in support of the Convention Hall project and to ask you to give serious consideration to the proposal that Mr. Netels is requesting under item number seven. Also, at this time, there are other people here who feel the same way that I do as far as the project is concerned, and even though they may not be speaking before you today, I'd like to give them a chance to stand up so you can see that they are here in favor of this project. So, those of you who are here would like to stand up, would you do so? Thank you. Most specifically, I'm here asking for the project to include pickleball, especially indoor pickleball. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the United States. My wife, Gail, and I have been playing for many years and were involved from the very beginning with a few others in helping to secure court time and space in Dare County. The number of players using the current facilities has grown to approximately 178 persons, not including visitors. We know of numerous vacation visitors who are anxious to play pickleball when they are here in Dare County, and because of the limited number of indoor facilities and scheduling difficulties, they are not able to do so. Over the years, Gail and I have played at many sites locally and nationally, and would like to see an indoor facility dedicated to pickleball, and then, excuse me, an outdoor facility dedicated to pickleball, and an indoor facility that would accommodate pickleball and perhaps other sports here in the Outer Banks. In closing, I would like to thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity to speak before you and suggest that you might want to consider having an evening meeting just to discuss pickleball, because there are those whose jobs have prevented them from coming to this meeting. Please know that I would also try to make myself available to answer any questions you have at another time. I would also like to invite those of you who are here now, who may not have ever heard of pickleball before, to come and find out about it. We're meeting tonight at the Kill Devil Hills Youth Center. We'll have pickleball, and we have people who will teach you about the sport. And feel free to come up and talk to me afterwards if you like about it, because I would like to answer any questions that I could. I think you'll enjoy playing the game, and we'd be glad to have you. Finally, I would also like to suggest as a taxpayer, and I thank you for the amount of money that you have put forward towards the recreation program, but I would also like to have you consider, and that would come under the aegis of pickleball and some of their activities that may be presented to you at a later time, of spending more than 1% of your budget for recreation. It just seems to me, and I guess I'm a little prejudiced, because I am a recreational major in college, I spent a number of years involved in that, and I'm still spending time involved with it, as you can obviously see. This just seems like a small amount to spend for recreation in a county this size. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Scott Garber.
Welcome, Mr. Garber.
Hello, Commissioners, Bobby. Thank you, Dick. Anyhow, I just came, Mr. Woodruff, you and I have been exchanging emails. We've been talking about pickleball. We've been talking about pickleball. As per your email, I went to the advisory committee. And just to report back to you that I walked in there, and one of the people that was seated opened up new business, and he opened up this pamphlet that showed a 100,000-square-foot with a swimming pool recreation facility for adults. And I said, wow, I finally found the first meeting that I'm really going to have fun at. And he presented this as new business, but it was a concept. I mean, you know, baby steps. 100,000, $35 million thing is not going to happen overnight. But it's a concept. So you guys found the money for the recreation department, about $700,000. And I thank you for that, for giving Tim those tools. But there's a concept, and I hope Tim will come and ask you for the money. So let's get a concept built. Let's get an idea in front of you guys so you guys can say yes or no or put it to committee, similar to what we're going to ask you on line item seven. I'm in support of this. It's going to house pickleball, but it is an event site. It's not something that Dare County Recreation is going to have full-time. Another thing, and just to add, as Dick was saying, the calendar that's happening over at Dare County Rec Center, it's full. Charlotte Midget, that runs that program over there, I feel she's doing a great job. But, you know, it's, everything's palling on her. All the youth is coming to her, now all the adults are coming to her. She's running out of time. She's running out of budget money. And people are getting kicked to the side. We're all making sacrifices, but it's time to grow. We need to grow in our community. Show some growth, reinvest back in your taxpaying people. Certainly appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Next is Brad Carey. Melissa Ashcroft.
Welcome this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. I hope you don't mind, we come up together on the next on the list. My name is Ben Saltzman, Marketing Director with Kitty Hawk Kites.
And I'm Melissa Ashcroft. I'm the HR manager there.
So we just wanted to take a few minutes of your time to talk about how the employment crisis is affecting our business, the measures that we're taking to address it. In particular, within the next couple of weeks, we're looking at a significant drop-off of our staff with kids going back to school. We have put an incredible amount of resources into housing. So at this point, we're trying to entice new employees to join us by providing them with free employee housing, if they're able to commit with us for an eight-week period from August 9th through October 3rd. So we're aware that there are local businesses as well that don't have access to the same resources that we do in order to provide this housing. And I can speak that from my marketing department's perspective, and our resources have been placed and shifted from marketing our typical activities and retail opportunities to trying to attract new employees to join us. So it's a pretty significant endeavor that we're undertaking. We just wanted the county commissioners to know the efforts that we're taking.
Yep. In addition to that, we are working outside of the area to try to form new partnerships with places like ski resorts. Specifically, we're working with Teo Ski Resort. They're going to be meeting with them in the next week or two to try to form a partnership and come up with some solutions so that we can take on their off-season employees and they can take our seasonal employees. And they have a worldly connection of a lot of whitewater rafting facilities and a lot of different other partners that we're hoping to make those connections with so that we can have a pool of people to fill in the future.
We thank you for your time. We just wanted to let you all know that what we're doing and the impacts this is having on local businesses.
Thank you.
What response are you getting to the 60 days of housing? Or what was it? Yeah, 60 days.
Eight weeks, yeah. It is limited.
So even eight weeks free housing, you're not having a lineup outside the door?
We're getting some bites at that, but not as many as we would hope. It's, I think, you know, the pool of available workers is significantly limited at this point.
Yeah. We've even raised pay rates. We're pretty much doing everything that we can, every thought we have, every contact we have, we're doing everything. And, you know, spreading a wide net, getting maybe onesie-twosie results from it. So it's dedicating my entire HR department, the marketing department, it's all we've been focusing on the last two weeks because it truly is a crisis we're going to run into here in the next week or two.
I feel for you guys. I'm in the same boat.
And me too.
Yeah, me too.
Don't know what I'm going to do.
Yeah. I've actually doubled my starting wage, and still no response.
Yeah. We are having similar responses, and it's not for lack of trying. We're pretty much doing everything, and it's...
We're throwing the kitchen sink at it.
Yeah. It's been a very big challenge.
Maybe some pickleball guys wanted a second job.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Garber, look at that. We've got all kinds of opportunities here.
Thank you all for bringing us up to date on that. I know I talked to John last week, and I asked him to ask you to come before the board. And I appreciate you doing that this morning. And just keep our fingers crossed, we got to keep plugging away at it from a municipality standpoint and a county standpoint of trying to get some workforce and essential housing in here.
Well, but that's the reason I asked the question, because you've just given workforce housing, and it didn't move the needle.
Right. I mean, it is a temporary amount of time that we're providing free housing for, but that housing will remain available. So, yeah, we do have a certain amount of beds that are available for us.
Because I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that the housing is a very, very important crisis, as we've talked many times. But this is the first I'd heard that despite the enticement of come and work for eight weeks and we'll put you up for free, eh, not interested. I scratch my head. I'm trying to figure out.
So we hope that speaking with you all will help move that. I personally have been going on the radio to talk about it. So, you know, we are doing everything we possibly can to get the word out.
I love the innovation thought path that you have as far as going up to the ski resorts and trying to partner with them. That's really an interesting concept.
Yeah. There's definitely a lot of symbiosis between the winter resorts and what we have here in the Outer Banks with all of our recreation.
I know a lot of our lifeguards do the same thing. They'll work here in the summer, then they do ski patrol in the winter, so. I got five of them, and they left this week. They're going to school. And they work, you know, just, it's the cycle.
Is that the predominant reason that these folks are leaving? Is that they're going back to college or going back to their education?
Yes. Most of them are going back to college, yeah. And with the lack of our international students this year, we are having a really hard time filling the void. So we're hoping by really expanding and starting to look at new relationships and partnerships and things for the futures because, so we don't have to really rely on just these two pools of people, your college students and your, you know, international students, that we can, you know, have a more balanced pool of people that can work in here until, you know, September, October timeframe.
And you may have said this, but how many beds do you have available?
We have, we just bought some more houses. So we have quite a few.
We have enough.
Yeah, we can usually put, I don't know, I want to say it's like 50s to 70 kids and houses.
Wow.
Significant.
That's a significant number.
Yeah.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for standing on the desk.
Thanks for the time.
Yep.
Keep us posted.
We will.
Okay. Thank you.
Next is Joe Mione.
Good morning, commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Mione. Thank you.
Nice to be here. I'd like to talk a little bit about unintended consequences. I came here 27 years ago, purchased a piece of property in Naggs Head, built my business there. And it seems like the first, well, the most important thing that was asked of me was what kind of cedar shakes am I going to put on my building? Didn't think about it at the time. Over the course of 27 years, the problem with hiring has always been around as far as housing. And basically, when they go to a board meeting or whatever, there's a lot of things that are considered, but never the issue of housing. Now, I have nothing against the Event Center. I think it's a great thing. But you have to think ahead of that. It says 191 employees. Okay. Was the question ever asked about where are they going to put these 191 people? Now you have Target coming in, TJ Maxx in Southern Shores. I don't know if any of these questions are ever asked. And it's always been the question of can't live on the beach because it's too expensive. And the thing is that we, I come from the Jersey Shore area, and that's why I came down here, it was an opportunity. Similar situation, the sound, we had the bay and the ocean. Go over the bridge into Tom's River, which is a heavily populated area and not far from a lot of areas in New Jersey. So your employment pool is available to you. Here you go over the bridge, and you're far away from any employment pool that you could pull from. That's why we get the, and I was a benefit of the foreign students that came over a few years back, many years back. But it was always a struggle to get employees. You know, all summer long, you see the signs, hiring, hiring, and then going back to school. Whether they want to take two weeks off before they go back to school, they don't tell you that upfront because otherwise they wouldn't get the job. But my thing is, a lot of things are coming up, and I feel as though maybe, I don't blame the developers. They're going to squeeze every square inch in how much they can get into to get as much profit as they can out of that situation. But a little bit more of the overdevelopment here causes more people to come down. More people come down, you get more businesses to help those people or, you know, supply whatever you need for them. So it's a vicious cycle. But I'm just here to say that when you consider anything, it should be, first of all, where are you going to house the employees? Where are they going to stay? A friend of mine, he's friends with the people that have the water park over there when they first came a couple of years ago. And they were from Ohio, I believe it was, and they have a lot of acreage there. It's like, okay, they only built, I think, 25, 30% of the park there. Why weren't they forced to build dormitory-type housing there? We're, you charge them so much, and it'd take it right out of their paycheck to have a captive audience. I don't know, there's a lot of solutions that can be, you know, and as far as, like I said, the Event Center, I have no problem with that. But you just have to look at the unintended consequences. And I think that's a lot that's been missing. I'm not saying just Dare County, I'm all along the beach there with different towns. And please consider that whenever you're putting in a new project, because it just exacerbates the project. And basically, you guys, I don't know if you want to be in the housing business, you know, I don't think it should be that way. But we're in a particular area that's unusual, I guess, in a lot of respects. Beautiful part of the country, but that's my consideration. Please listen to that. Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts.
Next is Scott Morton.
Good morning, commissioners.
Welcome, Mr. Morton.
Hi, my name's Scott Morton. I'm a resident of Kill Devil Hills. And I'd like to talk just a little bit about adult recreational services. There's a very large focus in the county on youth recreation, but there's not much time or facilities available for adults. We have facilities, but they're not open during the periods adults can get in there. We have a great youth rec center. It's open nine to five. I don't know how many workers have nine to five available for their recreational activities, but that facility could be used during the evenings, during the weekends, for adults. There's other facilities in the area, and I don't know if we're focused on adult recreation. But as we look at the aging process in the county and in the nation, the demographics are moving towards more older people and less younger people. So as we continue to develop our parks and recreation and develop the amount of money that's going in for the youth, we also need to look at the balance and see what we can do for our adults, and in my case, seniors. We have a very active senior community. They like to do active things, play active sports. And we don't have any facilities that are directly related to adult active people. So I'd like to encourage the commissioners to look at that situation and to encourage the Park and Recreations Department to study the balance between youth programs and the budget that goes towards youth and the balance that goes towards adult recreation, how we can utilize the facilities better, and look at all the facilities within the county and identify locations that active adults can go and do their basketball, baseball, pickleball. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's all that I have signed up. Is there anyone else here today that would like to speak at public comment? Any other public comment? Seeing none here, is there anyone from Buxton that would like to speak at public comment?
No comment from Buxton.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we've closed public comment, and we've moved to item four on the agenda. And Dave Clausen is going to make that presentation.
Good morning, Dave.
Good morning. This is the standard initial resolution for a piece of debt. This one is for your purchase of the Make-A-Mix property in Kill Devil Hills and the Manio Youth Center property, or Manio property in, sorry, Manio. The, we've given you a schedule, which we're going to try to finish with the September 14th Local Government Commission meeting for them to approve it on that date, and we close on September 16th. I wanted to point out the grand total, and it was this way in your capital improvements plan. You have the actual price for the Kill Devil Hills project, the actual price for the Manio project or purchase. The $201,300 for renovation was just a plug, and we rounded it off to $3 million. We've already notified Oakley-Cawyer under our continuing agreement that you did a couple of meetings ago, and they'll be looking at that. Their only concern was parking, that if that number's not good, they won't be good because of parking. But they're going to look at it and try to let us know as soon as possible. The resolution makes your standard findings in the best interest of the county in there to enter into the installment financing contracts. The projects will be essential, and we can finance them at essential rates over a 10-year term. Our amount to finance is $3 million. We prefer to use the investment, or installment financing contract as the investment, or the financing vehicle. There's no property tax increase needed. The taxing power of the county is not pledged. We're not under any debt service defaults. Our budget process is in compliance with the LGC requirements. We've had no audit financing, we've not been censured by the LGC. And you're going to hold a public hearing on August 2nd today, the next item. The reason we did that a little bit out of order is the financing bids are due on August 9th, and Bond Council wanted to have the public hearing done before we signed the commitment sheet on the financing bids. We also have this, the authorizations that are in your resolution are the authorized county manager and finance director to proceed with the contract for me to file an application with the LGC, which has already been done, that we're going to retain Parker Poe Adams and Bernstein as our Bond Counsel, DEC, and Associates as Financial Advisor, and Piper Scott is the placement agent, who's essentially doing RFP for the debt because this will be a private placement with a bank because of the 10-year term. And set the public hearing for later on today. What we've requested you to do is to adopt the initial resolution. And then, we had a change. You actually adopted the capital project ordinance for this at your last meeting so that we could do the pre-audit certification and get the contract back. But I do have a third item to ask. I missed the price on the Manio purchase by $700. I had $767,000 even. It should have been 767, 700. So if you will authorize the county manager to make that change in the capital project ordinance.
Any questions to Dave? I do have one county manager.
Do they vote on this now, or do they wait until after the public hearing?
They adopt this now because this resolution calls for the public hearing.
Okay, all right.
Dave, on the... Dave, on the Manio property, we've got a to be determined date for closing. Why is that? I thought, I thought they were, had run that up the flagpole with all the grand pooh-poohs that had to sign off on it.
They have.
It's been run up the flag with all the people that need to sign up on it. Their local board of trustees has signed the contract. We've approved it. There were two contingencies in the contract. One was for us to get LGC approval because we can't move forward without the money. And so we can't close till we get that. And at the time we did it, we didn't know what time. Similarly, when we did the contract, it had to go to the state folks at the Masonic Lodge. That has been done preliminarily, but they have to have their formal vote as well. So those two things are, are going to, when those are done, we can then close.
Got you. Bobby, was that included for the kitchen equipment to remain there?
We, as you all said, we took the kitchen equipment and crossed that out. We keep the kitchen equipment. They get the shed, we keep the equipment and we initial and they've initial that as well.
Right.
Do we need a motion on the 700 bucks?
That's part of the, that's part of this motion here, Danny. It's three items that, that county finance director is asking us to approve. And that is, that is one of the three items. Any further questions, Dave?
Two quick ones, Dave. Does it matter if it goes to 3,700? I know you kind of forced this to balance at 3 million. Should we adjust the youth center renovations by 700?
I asked Bond Counsel and he says as long as it's not what anybody feels is a material number, we're okay.
Okay. Second question, do you have a feel for what we might be floating this at? Under three?
Under two.
Under two?
Yes, sir.
I thought with some of the inflation and some of the actions recently, that might have.
Rates have actually gone down.
Yeah. Bond rates are taken.
In July.
It's amazing.
Treasury's hit a new low last week.
Under two. I, I just, I'm trying to figure out what's going on here.
Don't try to.
Don't.
Don't try to.
We're on the other side of the looking glass, guys.
That's right.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, it's a pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bateman. It's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then those on the motion signify by saying aye. If opposed, like sent, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Dave.
Item five on the agenda is a public hearing. This is a public hearing on the Manio Masonic Lodge and the Kill Level Hills Mako Mike property acquisition and the, and the installment financing contract. If anyone's here to like to speak to that, the rules we just had for public comment applies. Or anyone here that would like to speak to that issue? Seeing no one here, is there anyone in Buxton that would like to speak to that issue?
No comment from Buxton.
Mr. Chairman, we've closed the public hearing and we would move on to item six. And Noah Snyder is going to make this presentation.
Okay. Thank you, county manager. Good morning, Noah.
Good morning, David.
I know.
Noah, we need to get everybody sworn.
Yes, sir.
I request to amend special use permit two of 2020 for William and Shelley Dockerty to allow for the construction of a fourth mini storage facility at their property in Mann's Harbor. A request for an amendment to special use permit two of 2020 for Shelley OBX Mini Storage has been submitted by William and Shelley Dockerty. The original special use permit issued in June of 2020 was for a group development consisting of three mini storage warehouse facilities located on parcel 023856000 in Mann's Harbor. The amendment request is for the construction of one additional mini storage facility. The applicant's proposing to construct a fourth mini storage building on the parcel. The fourth building would be a 3,300 square foot mini storage facility measuring 20 foot by 165 foot. A site plan is attached to this memo depicting the proposed improvements. The fourth proposed mini storage facility meets the requirements set forth in the zoning ordinance for group developments. A copy of the site plan was provided to the Dare County Fire Marshal for his review and he has indicated that he has no issues with the proposed improvements. The only concern that he addressed was the applicant needs to ensure the pond on the property is kept clear of aquatic vegetation to allow for drafting operations in case of an fire emergency. There is a condition in the original special use permit that addresses those concerns already. The Dare County Planning Board reviewed the proposed amendments to the special use permit at the July 12th, 2021 meeting and deemed the conditions in site plan appropriate. The property has been posted and the adjoining property owners notified as required by the Dare County zoning ordinance. All prior conditions set forth in special use permit two of 2020 shall remain in effect. The original special use permit and the draft amendments are attached for the board's review. I will read the two changes or the two amendments to the special use permit. Condition number two of special use permit 2020 is amended to read, there is existing 2,400 square foot storage facility and two 3,600 square foot storage facilities on the parcel. Proposed 3,300 square foot storage facility will be building for the group development. Condition three is amended to read, a building permit for the proposed 3,300 square foot building for shall be secured from the Dare County Planning Department within 24 months of the date of the special use amendment approval by the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Dockerty is here to answer any questions that the board might have.
County manager, you're going to ask the applicant if he is in agreement with the conditions?
Consent to the entry of the file and the testimony of Mr. Snyder being entered into evidence?
Gillem.
I'm sorry. Gillem. Sorry.
Yeah, funny. Yes.
Yes.
Everything he said.
Okay. And do you also agree to the terms and the conditions of the conditional use permit? That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager. Noah, I know you mentioned that the, the Dare County Planning Board reviewed the proposed amendments to the SUP at their July 12th meeting and deemed the conditions in the site plan appropriate. Did they vote on the site plan?
The legislation's changed in North Carolina with the 160D amendment. The planning board is no longer allowed to recommend approval of quasi judicial proceedings. All they can do is deem that the conditions are appropriate for, and meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Any other questions of the board?
Yeah, I would just like to make a statement. The adjacent property, Melvin Twitty Jr., is actually my father-in-law and you guys did contact him and he's 100% in favor of this and he's got no problems whatsoever with it. So I just thought I'd throw that out there for the board.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else have any questions?
I've got a question as far as the, the change of law, so to speak, there. I don't like the fact that we're not getting a, and I understand this, but I don't like the fact that we're not getting a positive or a negative approval from the planning board. That's a very intricate part of the decision-making process for me as a commissioner. So when we come forward in the future, are we going to say, just like as you did then, we have no problem with it or?
The, during the planning board review, and it's my understanding of this, they can make recommendations that amendments be added to the conditional use, but they can't vote on it because it's their advisory, not regulatory.
You see what I mean, Bobby?
I do, but it's a distinction without merit, if you will. You don't have the authority to say no. Your authority is if it meets the conditions of the ordinance, you have to by law allow it. You can impose conditions that would solve problems that come up at the planning board level and you can add those conditions, but you can't outright deny it if it meets the conditions. So the planning board recommending or not recommending doesn't matter, but the planning board saying it does in fact meet all the conditions then satisfies the statutory requirements for you all to make a decision.
Okay.
I can live with that.
Yeah, me too.
That makes sense, Bobby. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, any other questions of the applicant? The item before us? If not, the pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman to approve and it's been seconded by Commissioner House. Is there further comments from the board, questions? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sent, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Chairman, that brings us to item seven on the agenda. And on item seven, Lee Nettles is here to provide a site update for the Soundside Event Center on behalf of the Dare County Tourism Board.
Good morning, Mr. Nettles.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. When I came before you at the June 7th meeting, you asked me to return to this meeting and present a plan for the Soundside Event Site. Thank you for that invitation. I'm pleased to share the Tourism Board's vision for the event center and how it relates to the site and to our community. See if we can get this going. We'll discuss what the event center is, why it's needed, where it'll go on the site, and I'll also dig deeper into the question of an onsite hotel and finally review some of the issues we'll face as we try to move the concept from, well, from concept to reality. The event center is an enormous project. Getting it built has required and will require an extensive process. Think of it as a boulder. It only gets moved forward if all of us, the Tourism Board, the county, the town of Nags Head, the community at large are all pushing the same boulder and in the same direction. So how do we narrow it down to just one boulder, one shared vision? A lot of that had to do with the hard work of an advisory committee that was appointed by the Tourism Board back in 2019. We have advisory committee members here and Tourism Board members here as well. The committee had representatives from the public, the town of Nags Head, the Tourism Board, the Hotel Motel Association, and the Dare County Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Ross, for your time, your energy, and your tough questions. The committee persevered through COVID and had a series of meetings over the last couple of years. The committee considered different use types such as sports, concerts, banquets, small trade shows, and the associated space requirements for each of those uses. We considered big buildings, small buildings, and alternatives to buildings. We evaluated facilities in many other markets and worked hard to determine which ones were most comparable to our market. We spoke with several people at those facilities and with an expert at a management company overseeing facilities in many medium-sized markets such as ours. We spoke with and considered input from local event developers. We developed rough building and site layouts. We considered current town ordinance and the variances or text amendments that might be needed. We updated and reviewed financial and economic impact and demand projections. After all that, the advisory committee voted unanimously to present the event center concept to the Tourism Board for its consideration. Subsequently, the Tourism Board reviewed the committee's recommendation and it too voted unanimously in support of the concept. Our hope, our goal is to gain your support for the vision. We'll discuss what's being proposed and why, but it's important to note that we're just talking about a concept right now. We're not talking about a building design. We're not talking about a booking policy. We're not talking about a funding plan. I'll return at a later date to discuss those items. We need much more input from the Dare Commissioners, the town of Nags Head, state regulators, and the public. Focusing our energy behind one vision for the site and the center just allows those discussions to take place and for the work to continue. All right, so what are we talking about when we say event center? Given the use types that I mentioned before, that we're trying to accommodate like sports, concerts, small trade shows, banquets, meetings, the center is envisioned to be a 48,275 square foot heated, cooled, flexible indoor space. To give you a frame of reference on the building size, 48,000 square feet is less than half the size of the old Kmart, which is 110,000 square feet. The event center would be comparable in size to the public grocery store in Kill Double Hills. The largest room, the event hall, the orange rectangle, is roughly 26,000 square feet. The advisory committee looked at different sports and what could fit in that space. It could accommodate three basketball courts or one court with retractable bleachers and for spectators in a championship-style format. Realistically, though, the sized space that we have is more likely to appeal to the smaller footprint sports like pickleball, wrestling, gymnastics, cheerleading. We see the space as an extension of the facilities currently available through the Dare County Parks and Recreation Department. Sports tournament visitors don't mind moving between different venues. Additional rec space gives locals and visitors more opportunities than currently exist. The consultant recognized that this sized space will not allow us to truly compete with dedicated sports facilities that are in other markets that are typically three times the size of what's being proposed here. But they did say that this addition of sports would bring Dare County more in line with national trends and expand a viable segment of visitation for us. Sports happen year-round. Pickleball tournaments, for instance, happen throughout the year and once a tournament is set, contestants, visitors, will schedule accordingly for years to come. When it comes to concerts, banquets, trade shows, the event center is able to host and will target groups of 300 to 2,500 people. The back wall, the gray area, can open up and connect to the event lawn, making larger events possible. This facility has the potential to attract national concerts to our area throughout the year. The dotted lines within the orange rectangle are collapsible walls that make it possible to partition the event hall into smaller spaces for concurrent events or meetings in one area, dining in another, flexible space. I'd like to draw your attention to the kitchen, the blue box that says K on it. Rather than a straight-up catering kitchen, we see this as a bigger opportunity for the community. We think there's potential to make it a learning kitchen, a culinary training facility that could be used to attract and train workers. There's an opportunity to partner with the College of Albemarle and with the Outer Banks Restaurant Association. Our restaurants struggle every year to fill jobs with qualified people. This facility would not only help to train high school and community college students, but also attract interested workers to our area for training and career starts. You probably noticed that I haven't called this, this building a convention center. We're realistic about the limitations of the site and our market. We aren't Virginia Beach, we aren't Myrtle Beach, and we don't want to be. The Outer Banks is an hour and a half from the nearest international airport and there's a perception that we're difficult to get to. That makes convention or large meetings business a stretch at best. Also, we simply don't have the space for a convention center. Virginia Beach's convention center is roughly 10 times the size of what we're talking about here. That's not us. Events, on the other hand, have been a good strategy for driving overnight visitation during the non-summer months. That's the mission of the Tourism Board. Events bring tens of thousands of visitors to our area every year, and that's without a large year-round indoor facility. We've had events like Taste of the Beach and the Wedding Expo that have outgrown existing spaces. We've had others like the Home Builders that haven't been able to hold their event here because the existing facilities can't handle the size of their event. I asked Michael Tillot, the person who produces the hugely popular OBX Rod and Custom Festival, what a facility like this would mean for his car show, and he said that it would take the event to the next level, a national level. He said he'd be able to attract the heavy hitters, as he put it. The car is worth more than a million dollars to debut at select shows. They don't want to set up outside for two days, they want to be inside for four days. He sees immediate and unlimited potential. You know, Michael, he would have been here this morning to speak, but he's on his way to Louisville to a car show with 8,000 people. We've had a couple of recent meetings with a young lady, a resident of Manio, who's interested in bringing a national craft and technology event to our area. Initial estimates are for 20,000 attendees and sponsors like Google, Red Hat, and IBM. Events are economic development in more ways than one. These people can work from anywhere. You've seen consultant reports and so have I. We have a responsibility to be careful, skeptical even. These figures are provided by Johnson Consulting, a company that's been in business and specializing our recommendations in this field for 25 years. For what it's worth, they believe in conservative projections and they also happen to have a high rate of returning customers. So here's what they project for the fifth year of operation, what they consider to be the first year of stabilized operation. $25 million in new, direct, indirect, and induced spending. That's an annual figure. They also project an operating deficit of more than $310,000. They also project an operating deficit of more than $310,000 for the center. Consultants have consistently said that a standalone multi-use facility will operate at a loss. We know that going in, and we can plan for it. It's worth it for the multimillion-dollar return the facility will have for our community. The Event Center and site are projected to generate more than 14,000 new lodging room nights, nearly 1.2 million in tax revenue, and help to support 191 new jobs. Nine of those are full-time equivalent jobs actually at the center. The remainder of the new jobs are throughout the community that are supported by the 25 million in new spending. I'm going to digress a little bit here. I know it's really hard to think about more tourism right now. What we're seeing right now and what we have seen over the last year is not a new normal. Things are eventually going to calm down. We're still in a global pandemic, unfortunately. Potential employees are still being paid to stay at home. This will pass. Meanwhile, 70% of our annual business happens in three months, June, July, and August. That makes us incredibly vulnerable to hurricanes, bridge and road closures, power outages, government shutdowns, surging fuel prices, shark bites, wildfires, and whatever's around the corner. I'd argue that part of the reason our workers have a hard time finding long-term rentals is because we're so seasonal. Thousands of jobs appear every summer, and then they go away. A seasonal four- or five-month worker is not a long-term rental. A 12-month worker is a long-term rental. A year-round tourism economy supports 12-month workers and long-term rentals. Let's talk about the plans for where the Event Center would be positioned on the property. First, just to refresh everybody's understanding of the property, here's an aerial view. You can see the original Soundside property, and then the two additional properties that the Tourism Board added to the north of the Event Site, the old Dairy Queen Mini Golf and Ropes course strip, and the former Pamlico Jack's site. Across the bypass, the Tourism Board owns the former South Beach Grill property. And here's a site layout for the Event Center concept. In this view, the bypass is located at the bottom of the screen, and Roanoke Sound is at the top. The blue block is the Event Center. You can see that the backside opens up onto the existing event lawn, like I mentioned earlier. I left the red property lines in there for now just to help everybody understand where things are positioned. In this layout, the Dairy Queen would go away, as would Pamlico Jack's. In the case of Pamlico Jack's, that building going away would create sound view where it doesn't currently exist. One of the things that we heard loud and clear in the earlier public meetings was the importance of preserving the sound view. As shown, 72% of the sound view from the bypass is preserved. The Event Center obstructing 28% of the view. Kite border and public access remains unchanged. The Tourism Board, as you know, is currently at work designing a boardwalk that will run along the sound. This, too, will be open to the public and will have different height levels and a route so as not to interfere with the kite border access enjoyed today. Let's zoom in a little bit. The light gray areas that you see are existing paved parking. The darker gray areas are new parking and interconnects so that a person can travel from one end of the site to the other without having to get back out on the bypass. The layout also removes two of the current curb cuts on the bypass, reducing the number from four to two, which should improve the traffic flow. The darker green areas are existing and proposed grass areas for overflow parking. You may have noticed that the site layout does not include a hotel on Tourism Board-owned property, nor is a hotel part of the recommendation from the advisory committee or the Tourism Board. Both groups had considerable discussion regarding this topic, though. You can certainly make a strong case for a hotel adjoining the center. Over the years, we've lost a significant number of hotel rooms and motel rooms throughout the Outer Banks. This changes what we're able to offer visitors. Hotel rooms are an easier sell for smaller groups that are hoping to visit for shorter stays during non-summer months. Arguably, we need more hotel rooms on the Outer Banks. I'd say that the rise of Airbnb is trying to fill some of that void. Also, the consultant studies that we've received have consistently said that an Event Center or a Conference Center would fare better with an adjoining hotel. Particular types of visitors, like meetings and associations, have an expectation of an adjoining hotel, which is one of the reasons our use-type projections don't depend on those types of visitors. The most recent study update that was given by Johnson Consulting said that the hotel inventory development in the area surrounding the center would be strategic as demand for the center grows. So hotel expansion in the area makes sense, and we expect that the private sector will respond. But here are the reasons why the committee and the Tourism Board do not feel the private sector hotel is appropriate for Tourism Board-owned land. First, it's adamantly opposed by one of our main stakeholder groups, the Hotel Motel Association. That's important to us, but it's not the main reasons for the decision. When we looked at the septic requirements for an onsite hotel in conjunction with the Event Center, the hotel represents 80% of that septic demand. That means more area dedicated to treatment, drain fields, and repair. We can physically fit everything on the site, but it comes at the expense of some of the event lawn, and preserving that event lawn space was a priority for both of the groups. The last two points kind of go together. They reference the private sector's consideration for building a hotel based on the level of return it will achieve. A hotel near an Event Center will certainly depend on the center for much of its business, but not all of it. Pitching a prospective leisure guest on the beach experience of the Outer Banks from the west side of the bypass is an uphill climb. It's not impossible, but it's harder than east of the bypass, which is why you don't see any hotels currently to the west. Even regardless of this point, hotel investors often expect and receive a public subsidy of some kind, either a significant contribution towards the hotel construction cost and/or sweetheart deal on the land. As a result, the Tourism Board and the advisory committee are not recommending the pursuit of a hotel on Tourism Board-owned property. The value of the Event Center stands on its own, and it does not require the hotel in order to be viable. So that's the concept for the center and the site. Should you join the committee and the Tourism Board in supporting it, we can begin the hard work of addressing the next round of issues. We believe that each one of these issues can be addressed, but we also recognize that any one of these can derail the project. It's going to take all of us pushing on the same boulder and in the same direction. A shared vision allows the work to continue. I'm happy to speak more specifically about any of these items on the screen or to answer any questions you may have about the presentation that I've given. Thanks for your time and your consideration.
Well, thank you, Lee. Really appreciate you breaking all that down for the board this morning. I would yield to the board to see if any of the board members have any questions of you concerning the Event Site. Commissioner Ross.
All right, Lee, thank you. Well done. Very good job.
Thank you.
Very good job. I've sat on the commission or the advisory board with Lee and others here in the room over the past months, and I think you've distilled it down very, very well. We had a list of items at the last conclusion of our advisory meeting. I think there were eight items that I had listed off there.
Yep.
I kind of was ticking them through my head.
These are pretty close to those, and
Yeah, and I wanted
And they're significant, as you know.
Oh, yeah. That's why I want to make sure everybody is clear. Are there any hurdles with regard to the building size that is the footprint or the height that yet have yet, and I'm looking at John, hi, John, Delucia back there. Anything that we must know or should know about that with regard to the town of Naggs Head?
Yes, so I would first say that when the current town of Naggs Head ordinance was developed, it did not have consideration for a facility of this type. So we had a couple of representatives, the mayor of Naggs Head and another commissioner from Naggs Head on the advisory committee as well. And what they said, they recognized from the outset that because this type of building doesn't exist in the town, that there were going to be variance requests, text amendments, perhaps. So what was needed in order to further the discussion was a plan, a rough plan of what we were trying to do and why, why the building height was necessary, why the building size was necessary and justified. From that, we'll need to go about the hard work of meeting with the planning department in Naggs Head and eventually with the commissioners to request those adjustments. Since you mentioned that the building size, the current ordinance states that you're limited to 20,000 square feet in Naggs Head unless it adjoins a hotel, in which case the building size isn't capped. The proposed building size, as I mentioned, is 48,275 square feet. We also expect to request a variance or some type of text amendment on the amount of parking. We're pretty close. Just based on the way that the ordinance is written right now, that would require close to 600 paved parking spaces. We have currently, or what's proposed, 312 paved. We can do 266 in the grassed areas. That doesn't consider or include South Beach Grill property parking or being able to park on that main event lawn. So we're pretty close. The biggest difference is the amount of paved parking spaces. I don't think that it's anybody's intention to have a huge asphalt lot over there. So we're encouraged by our discussions with the town, and I think that we can get there. The building height, the ordinance states 42 feet. We are in the neighborhood of 45, pretty close. The septic, I'll kind of go back to that for just a second if I could. The septic in this diagram is located in the far bottom-left and the far bottom-right. We're able to accommodate the gallons per day that are set forth, and we have the space for it, as you can see, but we'll need to work with state regulators on getting that permitted, as we will with stormwater as well. So we've got some significant things to tackle, not the least of which being the cost of the project. The rough order of magnitude cost is 17.6. We question that amount, and we're getting another point of comparison on it. I don't think that that reflects current construction cost. Hopefully, our current construction cost won't continue forever, but anyhow, we want to get another view on that. The operating deficit I mentioned before is by year fives around 310,000. And then, of course, the construction funding and financing, the Tourism Board, we are not, by law, we're not allowed, we don't have the authority to take out a loan. We do have a dedicated amount of money that, in our budget, within the long term restricted, that is going towards this project. Yes, sir?
All right, two more questions. Again, corollary to these, in terms of the operating deficit, should that construction cost rise, again, given some of the environmental aspects of building anything in the country today, that $300,000 or $400,000 annual deficit would increase? Fair to say?
The operating deficit, I think that's fair to say.
I think that's fair to say. Okay, I just want to get that under it. And secondly, the South Beach Grill site.
Yes, sir.
Right now, it's sort of a very long lawn dart area. And in terms of contemplating, we sort of discussed this during our advisory committee meetings, but in this final rendition, which, again, looked great, thank you for sharing that, Lee, I don't really see much application for that. We discussed possible septic field, we discussed possible parking. It seems like a remnant right now.
The South Beach Grill property was the first of the additional properties, the three additional properties that the Tourism Board purchased. You're right, it still exists as an opportunity for overflow parking and potentially even some septic relief. The town of Naggs Head, the current ordinance does not give credit for parking that's provided on the other side of the bypass.
Right, right. I knew that. So it felt to me, Lee, like, the point I'm trying to make for everyone, it seems like it's going to be a much tougher walk to get parking approved there to add for the site, and an equally difficult walk to get that extended for septic drain field.
I think so, and all the better that we're able to accommodate the different needs on the contiguous site.
Rob, I agree with you about the South Beach property for septic, because I don't think you can run a septic line underneath a highway.
Yeah, that's what we have to do, which seems, again, very difficult.
Yeah, and I don't think DOT
I don't even know what the engineering would be required to do that.
Yeah, I don't think DOT would allow that. Another thing is, if we did, if you did do parking over at the South Beach lot, it's very hard to walk across the bypass. Would there be like an overhead walkway or?
I don't envision that. I think it's much more likely that we would move to get a signal at that intersection, trying to work with DOT to do that.
Right.
You know, they don't want to add any more traffic signals than are necessary, but I think with a facility of this kind, you have a much easier time making the case. Currently, right now, the town of Naggs Head, the event developers, the events that happen out there pay for off-duty police officers to man the crosswalk, and we've gotten much smarter over the years about the number of those crosswalks and how they operate and with the message boards and everything.
With regard to the septic, I'm assuming these septic fields that are shown on here are traditional-type septic drain fields?
I would want to request the assistance of Mr. Delucia when it comes to that.
The question comes is, there's emerging technologies that are handling septic in various places, smaller, more efficient. Is that considered for this, or could that be considered for this? Mr. Delucia, I'll ask you that question.
Good morning, everybody. Yes, Commissioner Everman, the areas that are shown there, we're looking at about 12,000 gallons a day, probably. Probably not that high, but that's probably what the design number will be. The drain field area and the repair areas have been set up for pretreatment. That close to the sound and that close to SA waters, we'd want to treat the sewage to a higher degree than just a normal septic system like we'd have on our houses. So the plan would be to do a system that would be similar to what is at the Aquarium Pier, similar maybe to what was at the Coastal Studies Institute, a completely underground treatment system that wouldn't be seen, drain fields would just be green grass areas.
So, and the pretreatment, is that a new technology? Or what I'm trying to do is get to where we can handle that where that's not an issue?
It's not new technology. It's technology that we've been using for years down here, and it's tried and true. The system that's at the Aquarium Pier and at the Coastal Studies Institute is one of the best treatment systems, I think, that is on our Outer Banks right now.
So they're state-of-the-art?
Yeah, they work well. I mean, Coastal Studies was designed to meet reuse standards. I wouldn't drink the water coming out of it, but it's pretty clean when it comes out of there. I mean, probably, most of you don't know, but at the Coastal Studies Institute, that pond that's in front of the Marine Services Building, there's two ponds there, that is the disposable area for the treated effluent. It's very naturalized. We could do that on the Event Site, but I don't know that we want to put ponds where we have a group of people. I'd rather keep it underground.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go away, John. Don't go away.
You tried.
I'm going to put you on the spot. Could you give us your estimate or probability? And I know I'm not going to hold you to it, I'd just like to get a feel for the four items that we listed. Item one, building height, either text amendment or variance to go to 45 feet.
Building height, the building height by the consultants is being driven by some of the sports of the sports events. They need higher ceilings.
Right, I remember, we talked about that.
The current ordinance in Naggs Head would allow you to build up to about 42 feet. We probably need 45 to 50 feet, depending on what the roof line and what the roof shape looks like. So, quite frankly, the hospital building is larger than this building and taller than this building.
How about the size? Without a hotel, we're maxed at 20, and this is 48,000. Lee, you're free to jump in here, too.
The 20,000-square-foot building limitation was pretty much put in place, I think, to preclude some of the big-box developers coming in. I think that's what was really limiting that and the concern of the council at that time. As Lee said, we've met with the planning director, we've talked with the mayor, we've talked with commissioners. The event site will have to have its own definition. When we developed the YMCA, we had to write an ordinance that would allow a building of that size and those uses. When we did the hospital, the same thing had to occur. So now we have an event site that is unique, and I believe that the town is supportive of it. So far, they have it.
The last two, of course, were, one, parking, that was the town, and two, septic, that was the state.
Yes.
I'll take parking and lump it in with what you've just concluded on the town, which I agree, seemed favorable, which was encouraging to me at our last advisory meeting. And finally, the likelihood or probability of state regulators approving our plan on treating wastewater and the subsequent drain fields as designed on the layout.
There's some history on part of the property that precludes it from being used for septic. Years ago, there was a developer that wanted to develop on part of this property, and it was deemed unsuitable.
Right.
For onsite, subsurface septic. When we did Coastal Studies Institute, that site was deemed unsuitable for onsite drain field septic system.
Yes, sir.
So there's a couple of different branches in the government that regulate different forms of treatment and different forms of disposal. We had, well, Coastal Studies had to go to the branch that would allow discharge to a pond.
Right.
The two areas we're showing that were drain fields, on the north, it's where the Pamlico Jack drain fields have been since I started my career here on the Outer Banks. And on the south end, it's where the drain fields for the old, the restaurant and the skating area. That's where they were allowed to dispose. Historically, it's been granted. We still have to bring the state down. We still have to convince them that it's suitable. I think we have a very good argument for it. I think that they will be less likely to have issues with it if they know we are pre-treating to a higher standard in that location.
Right.
I don't think that our daily flow is going to be 12,500 gallons a day. I think it's going to be more like 5,000 or 8,000 on a heavy day. So there's some things that we need to work out with the state, but I'm confident that we can work it out.
Has there been any reach out to them, any temperature reading?
I already have. I've reached out to the fellow who would be reviewing this.
Okay. Lee, would you characterize the Virginia Beach Convention Center as underused? I've been to it a couple of times, but I've always marveled, and I could be wrong, at the size of that thing. And, I mean, I'm not seeing a lot of cars in the parking lot. We would not need to go anywhere near that. And I would add to, not just the hotel motel we interjected to, but I've been sensitive to the public perception of this, and the public is, based on what I'm seeing, is not going to be for anything large. I think this is manageable. I'm liking what I'm seeing. But, you know, just in comparison of, you know, I just don't think that the Virginia Beach Convention Center is where we would want to go, number one. Number two, they're not filling that thing up. I could be wrong.
Well, of course, over the last year, year and a half, it's no reflection.
Sure.
Because of COVID. But it was never our intention, nor do I imagine that it ever would be, to try and emulate Virginia Beach or Myrtle Beach. It's just not true to the area. I think that a big goal going in was to preserve the natural views and to try and leverage the beauty of the property, and also to preserve the public access to those areas. So, you know, as I stated, the paved parking comes from an ordinance that had no regard for a facility of this type. I like to believe that it's going to be a commonly-held intent and desire to try and preserve those grass areas into green spaces as best we can.
Just on that issue, that's been done in Kitty Hawk at the Catholic Church. That church is slammed at Easter. You can't get near it. But the rest of the year, maybe 30% of that parking lot maybe is used. And they've paved the 30% that's used, and they have the other 70% that isn't used daily with stone. You can, you know where the places are, but it's not paved. It's open. It's clay or grass or whatever. So this lends itself, because this thing is, it's planned to peak, and the peak isn't every day. If you go to the convention center in New Bern, if you go there most days, you have no problems getting in or near or around it. But when they have an event, everything is full up, and it's not every day. And they have a smaller place in New Bern, I can't remember what it's called. Do you know the other meeting place they've got that's on the other end of the river?
In New Bern?
Yeah. That is closer to what we have planned here that is the same way. We've had, we have the meeting that we have with the dredge folks there, the inlet people, that's smaller convention site. And it's on the river, and it has a small amount of parking, but it has overflow parking. It's down near the Tryon Palace down in that area. And so this lends itself to that. With the height, the good news about this is you've got lots of open area around it, and so when you have those large setbacks from other things, height becomes less of an issue than when you've got things packed together. And then, just from a local government perspective, there are ways to accomplish all that. You can do variances, you can do text amendments, you can do overlay districts, you can have a, you know, a convention center overlay district, and you have special rules that only apply if you're going to do that, that would allow you to do some things. So all of those things are doable. Again, if the town is supportive, then there's ways to make that work without twisting the ordinance all around and making a mess of it or opening up other Pandora's boxes within the town. So I think, again, there's some work to be done, but it seems doable. Nothing seems to be irregular in it. On the state side, the state has a checklist, as John will tell you, because we've been up to the state on a number of projects over the years. You either meet the checklist or you don't. And, you know, that's why you've got John, he's going to make sure it meets the checklist, and if he does, then it gets done. So this seems doable, from what I've seen.
A lot of, I would say, most of the work of the advisory committee and the tourism board's consideration, all these items that we're talking about revolve around the same issue, right sizing a building. Don't make it too big. Don't make it for, you know, something ridiculous. But at the same time, be specific about the uses and the types of business that you're trying to bring in, what they'll do for you, what they need. And so I think that's been at the heart of all the work that we've done so far and would remain. It's a big building. There's no two ways around that. So we want that building to work as hard for us as it can. And that's a large part of why we're intending to make it so flexible and be able to connect with the outside as well.
Lee?
And build in the public uses with the culinary training facility, with the kitchen, concerts, tying in with the boardwalk project, sports.
It'll help small business. I think this concept will help small business take some ownership in this. Lee, one of the biggest complaints I get about the event site, as it stands right now, is the traffic. And going by, driving by the event site while there's an event sometimes can be quite nightmarish. I know you said that you were looking at putting a, possibly a traffic light there. What concerns me is there's going to be two ingress and egress sites, the one to the north and the one to the south. Of course, it joins by that interior road, but still, people are going to be coming and going out of that. Are you planning on having lights at both of those, or shutting one down during the beginning and end of the events, or?
Commissioner Tobin, probably, we will probably have to rework both of the driveways somewhat. The entrance into, the main entrance right now does have a right deceleration lane, right-hand turn. I would envision that the Pamlico Jack's driveway would become a one-way-in, right turn in and right turn out with a deceleration lane there. That way, that would force anyone that wants to make a left-hand turn to go to Grouse Street, where I'm fairly certain we were going to want a light at that time with this kind of facility.
Okay.
Which lines up with the Grouse Street that's opposite.
And my other question was, in the first slide, you had one that said 191 employees, I believe it was?
Yes.
Is that for the site, or is that?
No, no.
That's overall impact for the?
Yes, the projections for the full-time equivalent positions for the event center itself were nine. The 191 comes from throughout the community, which is justified or created by the $25 million in new spending.
And for the gentleman that spoke during public comments, any idea on employee housing?
I think that I would just applaud the hard work that this board has done to date and will continue to do to provide affordable housing options. I know that you've made great progress on it. I know that it's a community-wide concern, and it's something that we're all going to have to work to address.
Okay. I've got a couple. I know you're talking about the kitchen with having the culinary students in there. I think that's an admirable idea. And I know this is, first, we've got to get it built first before we go into this type of stuff, but just an idea. Also, would there be plans for our hospitality students, because this could be an opportunity for them to gain some experience as well?
Yeah, I think that's a natural. And we have done some work already with COA, and I would expect that relationship would expand greatly with an event center. I mean, I also see the high schools as a resource in this effort.
Cool. Thank you. There's a bit of a hub going on between COA here in town, Coastal Studies, Jeanette's Pier. The proximity of these locations is going to aid this.
All right. Anyone else from the board have any questions, Lee? Commissioner Bateman?
Just, Lee, thank you for all your hard work, and thank you for the advisory board committee that got together and tried to bring this thing forward.
Thank you.
I think that all the questions that we rose up and asked, whatever, it all depends on cooperation from the town of Naggs Head. It's in their court. You know, you came up with a visionary plan. I think it's a good visionary plan. I think it's something that, but we have to have complete cooperation from the town of Naggs Head in order to make all those things happen. And I think that's what's going, I think they'll be very cooperative. And that's exciting. It's going to be a community project with them involved in it, because there are a lot of things you've got to address, especially the height and the 20,000-square-foot restrictions on size. The other thing I wouldn't discount is the fact that I think there are places in the past where they have had off-site parking for the parking lot across the street, as well as off-site sewage. And maybe when you do your specialty use permit or whatever you're going to do there, or variances, you could bring that into play at the same time, possibly.
We'd expect that for the larger events, that we're going to continue to need off-site parking and shuttles for those. I mean, seafood festival, for instance, 10,000 people, you know, what we're proposing isn't going to address that parking situation fully.
Right. I will also say that the whole tourist bureau, at the meetings we were there, everybody was fully behind this concept, 100%.
Thank you, Commissioner Bateman. Yeah, he mentioned in his presentation that it was unanimous. Lee, I've got a question of you before we close, but before I do that, as a courtesy to the remainder, you have a number of your board members here with us this morning. As a courtesy to them, any of you like to add anything, you're certainly welcome to do that now before I ask my final question of Lee. Okay. Looks like you did a pretty good job, Lee, ain't it?
I had a few of my bosses in the audience.
That's right.
Did I stick the landing?
Nice one. With that being said, where do we go from here? What's the next steps?
As I stated, you know, our goal would be to simply get your support for the concept that exists right now. Just understanding, we've got a lot of work yet to do. But with your voice added to that unified front, you know, we're all pushing on the same boulder, and it just makes those conversations and that work able to happen. I mean, you can imagine if we had three, four different options that we're trying to test the waters on with state regulators and the town, it just isn't going to happen. So I would ask for your support.
All right. Well, with that being said, I will ask, I hope our board has gotten enough information over the last several meetings, and again, this morning is thorough as you've been. What's the consensus of the board? Are you guys in consensus with this proposed plan that this is, this is, wants to move forward?
I am. I would, even if a resolution from this board supporting this has any value, I would encourage that.
Rest of the board?
I'm well for it.
Is that something you would like to take back to your board, Lee, as far as a resolution from this board, that we're in agreement with the concept?
Yeah, certainly. That's fantastic. Thank you.
Since Commissioner Couch made that motion, we'll get him to draft it.
Bring it.
And we'll take care of that. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second about the vice chair and Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none. And those in favor of that motion by Commissioner Couch signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likes that. Motion carries now. Thank you very much, Lee.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
At this time, I may ask for a five-minute recess. I'm going to call the Dare County Board Commissioners Meeting back to order. I'll turn it over to the county manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We're on item eight on the agenda, and Becky Huff is here to present the annual settlement of the 2020 ad valorem taxes.
Good morning, Becky, and welcome.
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you for having me today. Per statute, every year I have to give you a settlement of the yearly tax collection on our ad valorem taxes. You will have part of that, you have that settlement information in your packet. For this year, our collection rate for the county, we ended on June 30th with 99.67% collection rate, which as far as we can tell, I've not been able to find anything prior to that was that high. I believe we're probably in the top five in the state on the collection rate. I have a fantastic staff this year. We have done a lot of, we've provided a lot more opportunities for electronic payments for people, which decreases the amount of staff time required to do data processing for checks and payments. We still take, people walk in the door, we still take checks in the drop box, all this kind of stuff. But we do offer a lot more opportunities electronically for people to pay, which relieves the staff for that day-to-day work, which allows me to get them into more of the collection processing. I will let you know, this year, we have contacted every single person, or made attempts to contact every single person who had a delinquent tax. From the January 6th when they went delinquent up until June 30th, we had contacted almost, I would say, 99% of the people who had a delinquent tax with us. We collected, we put a lot of people onto payment plans. We've collected- We've collected a lot of prior year taxes. The last, last year for prior year taxes, when I did the 2019 tax settlement, we had collected approximately $427,000 of prior year along with the 219. This year, we've collected $719,000 along with the 2020 tax year. So we've almost doubled our collections on the prior year stuff. And that is basically the personal property tax bills, such are the lower amounts, which are usually the ones that fall off the end that we don't have time to contact before we bill out for the next year. But because we've done, we, we've been able to pull in almost all of the staff to do the calling and contacting people, we've been able to collect a whole lot more on prior year stuff and on the personal property end of it. We've got a really good collection rate for all of the towns and I no longer collect for the motor vehicle that's done through the state. Each year you need to, you will have to charge me to begin collections for the next tax year for the 2021. Normally, we do that during this process. We are not done with the 2021 billing yet because of the addition of all the beach nourishment districts, which requires a lot of data entry for us to make sure we get all the parcels in with all the correct rates. Southern Shores has new ones. We have the ones for Avon. And we're still in the process of making sure and verifying that we have all of those correct. The tax bill should probably go out next week. We're hoping by the end of next week, beginning of the following week, the 2021 tax bills will be out. At that point in time, on the next board meeting, you'll, you'll get a motion for you to charge me with collecting. And at that point in time, you'll have what the levy will be and what the value will be. The next step is, on the second page of the settlement is the prior year. And that's where I, we've done a lot of prior year collections. And the Roanoke Island water assessment is one other thing I wanted to touch on. This was the last year to collect. This was year 10. There was no interest or no penalties on the water assessment. There were a lot of people that were under the assumption that after 10 years, it would all get written off if they didn't pay it. That's not correct. State statute would only allow us to write off one year of a payment. So we have another nine years to collect on the Roanoke Water Audit Assessment. As of June 30th, 92.5, my glasses on, 92.55% of the people had paid theirs in full, the $1,700. Out of the people that were left, there were 396 of whom we have contacted every one of them. We have 96 of those people have paid in full since June 30th. We have approximately 275 of them on payment plans. And the remaining 25 that are left, we are working on researching, they have questions about the water assessment. And it, and once we get through with the research, we will get them on payment plans too, so that by the time, the farthest out, we're going is 12 months. Some people with multiple years, multiple properties, we are allowing them to go out for 24 months. So within 24 months, we should have all of the Roanoke Island water assessments collected. Southern Shore special assessment is always, is collected at 100%. The other thing to touch on is Akia's Legal Services, which is our foreclosure attorney. In this past year, they have collected $310,641 towards taxes that have gone off to the foreclosure attorney. We currently have 41 parcels in foreclosure with the foreclosure attorney. Over the course of the process, he has collected two point, almost $2.5 million for us in taxes. It has cost us nothing. The county does not pay for that service. It is whatever, we have a contract with them. There's a contracted rate. Any charges that are done there are attached to the parcel that are paid at close when the, when it's sold off in a foreclosure sale. If it doesn't get that far, if the people pay it off, they pay for the legal fees. The county does not take on any of those fees for the foreclosure services. Let's see. And the last that I wanted to go over was some of the things that we have done to do the collection services. We send out 105 second and final notices. That's where we send out the letters. That's not the second notices that go out. Those are the letters that we send out to customers after the second notices go out. The pre-foreclosure letters was 217. We're currently on 102 payment plans, which does not include the couple hundred for the Roanoke Island water assessment. That 102 is just for people with delinquent taxes. We've done 79 garnishments and attachments. We've done over 1,200 phone calls between the four staff members that are calling and contacting people. 115 NSF that have come through. We have 10 parcels in bankruptcy right now. Out of those 10, seven of those have 2020 tax bills in them. So those are ones that are uncollectible for us. And we've only collected $39.79 through debt set-off. But that's because we have such a high internal collection rate that there's very little left to be done through debt set-off, which is the North Carolina Department of Revenue for income tax refunds and lottery winnings. But we do still send people off. We still have people out in the debt set-off program. But it's just a very small amount at this point because we have such a high collection rate. Do you have any, I also want to introduce you to my staff because they are the ones who do all the hard work. Ladies, if you'll stand up, this is Jennifer Davenport, the deputy tax collector, Corinne Etheridge, who is a legal assistant, Paula Bingham, who is our tax collection specialist, and Ricky Burris, who is our occupancy and food and beverage tax specialist. And they have done a fantastic job. Misa Godfrey is also one of our staff members. She had a preset vacation with family out of town. So I was happy she got to do that. But I just want you to know that they have done a fantastic job, even during the COVID. They all worked from home. We, we split the staff because obviously a very small staff could not afford to have the entire staff quarantined at one time. So we worked half and half, three and three. We, three worked from home, three worked in the office. We had Matt over in IT got us laptops. He got us the equipment to talk on the phone to customers. They never knew that we weren't in the office and we just kept things rolling. And we never had any issues. We didn't have any blips. And they worked just as hard at home as they did at the office. So, okay, I, that's really all I have to report at this time. Do you have any questions?
Fantastic stuff, Becky. When we spoke a week or so ago, I was questioning her about a couple of things. And I know you said it was 99.67. Maybe I might have misunderstood you. You said you were waiting for some more numbers to come in.
We are at 99.75 today.
That's, that's what I thought. You, remember you telling me that. So 99.75 is incredible.
There's not much more we can, we can get at this point.
So it's amazing. And, and I won't even go into detail as to what her staff has done with respects to taxes with Airbnb's and, and that type of thing. It's incredible what her staff, what they've been doing there as well as far as collections go, running down stuff there. So.
And the occupancy is out of the roof at this point. Our occupancy, you all know that. And Ricky is the one who's in charge of that and Misa's our backup and they do a fantastic job with coordinating that, balancing it every month. So.
Right. Just incredible work, incredible work. Danny?
Guys, do you, do you think, are we, are we losing any revenue on the Airbnb and the VRBO? There's a lot of misinformation running around about where we are with that, but I'd like to just have the record cleared.
No, we're not. As far as we can tell, we're not losing revenue. We have Airbnb and VRBO currently collect and remit to us occupancy taxes. So that, I mean, if they're, if they're picking one of those off-the-wall companies that they're renting through, we're still working on finding those. A lot of, I'm going to say 90, 95% of the people are honest. They want to do what they're supposed to do. We got a lot of that when we sent those brochures out that year to let people know what the occupancy tax was and what they're required to do. We got a lot of people, I didn't know I was supposed to do that. I need to do that going forward kind of thing. But over in the assessing department, they are working on, and they've been working on this for years. They had to stop because of revow or slow it down a lot because of revow and then COVID. But they are in the process of putting together a program where they find all these, the Airbnbs and the VRBOs and make sure that they are listing as a rental company because it's a personal property tax. So we work together between our occupancy and their rental tax. So we make sure we're both, all have the same people together. Our departments work very well together. But they're also working on a program put together in a specific procedures to find these people that don't have, that aren't listing with us. And Bob and I had talked about this earlier, that with, there are several companies out there who say they will find these for you. We've talked to, we, we just talked to one about two months ago, a new one. It actually was a new one that had merged with another one. What they're offering is, we do three quarters of that work already.
That's right. Even the real estate companies, they, they will tell you that we're bird-dogging these guys because everybody, they're all marketing now to the Airbnb, VRBO. So yeah, there's, that information is easy enough to get.
Yeah. And, and using their, our mapping system, we have a fantastic GPS system. And with the information that we're able to glean from the mapping, our mapping and like VRBO will put it out on the website with a map, you know, kind of a general area where that building is and a picture of it, we can discern where that house is.
Sure.
So that's, that's what we're doing a lot of it. And then verifying that they're showing as part of the rental program, that they're a short-term rental for the personal property tax part of it. And then a lot of the VRBOs and Airbnbs also rent with the, the rental companies. So we have a list of them that they're already part of a rental program. So there's, there's a small percentage that are always going to play the system, but we're getting better at finding them.
Thank you.
And they're, I mean, they're actively, they're actively working that, Danny. It's incredible the job that they're doing for the occupancy set. I think you told me there were like 30 different vehicles for, for those groups. But they pay them monthly and, I mean, it's, it's, it's incredible what her staff's doing to, to uncover some of those that are maybe trying to circumvent the system.
Yeah.
But I, I would say it's, it's miniscule based on my conversation with Becky and what her staff's doing.
Yeah, there, and, and the assessing department's doing a fantastic job with that too. We're, we're all working together, trying to make sure we get as much as we possibly can because that's fair to everybody.
Right.
Now, Becky, with the VRBOs and, and things with the occupancy tax, if they are caught in not doing the tax, what penalties can they incur?
They are required to file for all the times that they have done, all the months that they have previously. And there are set, state statute requirements for late filing and late payment penalties that we assess to them for every single month that they have not done what they're supposed to do.
Gotcha.
And they can be significant if it's a large amount.
Yeah, sure.
It's up to 5%.
It starts at 15, the first month of September.
Starts at 15 and goes up to 35% the cap on it, depending on how many months they're delinquent.
So it's very agitatious if you're upfront and do it like you're supposed to.
Exactly, exactly. And if we hear from someone that, that, if, if someone calls in and lets us know, hey, I think this person is renting, can you, if they're not on our list, or we could send them a packet. And if they, that gives them the opportunity to call and say, hey, I'm only doing with Airbnb or I'm only doing at VRBO so I don't have to file myself, they file for me, which is fine. Then we have it in the file that we have contacted them. So we do follow up with any information that comes into the office.
All right. Fantastic job, ladies.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. That brings us to item nine on the agenda. This is an RFQ that we sent out for professional engineering services. We talked about this, I don't know, several meetings ago, but we need an engineer that, to do things for us as simple as locating a property corner. Or, I'm going to talk to you in a few minutes about a stormwater issue up on the north end. It would have been nice if we would have had an engineer. It would have saved us two or three weeks of trying to figure out what to do because we would have an engineer to go out there and look at it and tell us, you know, in a day or two, what we could have done. So we're trying to get somebody placed on staff. Dustin sent out an RFQ. It went out, it was advertised. We had three responses. One was from a group called Progressive Design Collaborative out of Raleigh. They do a lot of this kind of thing. They're, on their resume, they had a number of agencies and larger organizations up in that area that they did this kind of work for. We had a, one, one come in from Timmons Group out of Elizabeth City. Timmons Group, we've worked with them. They did our animal shelter project and they also have done the COA project. They're in Elizabeth City. Kim Hamby is the engineer over there. We've worked with her very well. And then we had one from Albemarle Associates and John DeLucius here on behalf of Albemarle this morning. Dave and Dustin and I went through and reviewed all of those. We kind of threw out the guy in Raleigh really till we quickly, not really because they weren't qualified or didn't have the credentials. They were very qualified, but they're in Raleigh and if I need something this afternoon or in the morning, I need it or we wouldn't be doing this and trying to get someone from Raleigh we didn't think would be workable. As between Albemarle and Timmons Group, they're both good. They've both done work for us. Albemarle has done work for us for many years, did the Byways Project for us, I think did this site for us for all of the stuff that's here, did the Dare Center. So they've done a lot of work. We've been pleased. Kim Hamby's done a lot of work. We've been pleased. But all was said and done, credential-wise are both good, but John's here.
Yep.
He's here. I can get him on the phone. I have his cell number. I can call him in the evening. He doesn't like that, but I do it.
Potentially.
But, and so just for the sake of convenience, we think that Albemarle was the choice for us and that's who we're recommending that you all select as our engineer of record that we can do. What we would need you to do, if you're prepared to do that, is you would need to, in your motion, exempt ourselves from the Mini Brooks Act and then authorize us to retain Albemarle Associates as the county engineer.
All right. Is, what's the pleasure of the board? Okay, is the motion on the floor of our Commissioner Bateman seconded by Commissioner House. And floor is open for discussion, but I'll just say with respect to Albemarle Associates and John, as Bobby said, they've been around for a long time, but he knows the out-of-banks. He, he knows what we're looking for. He knows the ins and outs of, of this, what we need. And we certainly need to do business with our locals. And I have all the confidence in John and his staff as to what they can do. And more importantly, he knows the out-of-banks. So I'm, I'm certainly happy to support this motion. Anyone else?
Chairman, I would just add to that. The Byway pathways, the one in Hatters Village is twofold. The community is, is deeply appreciative, appreciative of it, but when you get a chance to really check it out, it really highlights that it's just a natural fit. It's, it's done a lot for, for Hatters Village. They're, and they're not even done yet.
All right. Anyone else? Commissioner Ross?
I would endorse that. I just got to know John, working on the Tourism Event Site Advisory Board. And it's been a pleasure, John. Really appreciate all your help and service on that. So terrific work.
Great. All right. With that being said, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose likes that? Motion carries you now. So go to work, John.
Thank you very much. And Bobby will call me. He'll call me on a Friday afternoon when I'm sitting.
I know.
I think this is Leo's. I'm going to take it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Chairman, item 10 on the agenda is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And I believe you're going to make that presentation.
I am county manager, if, if the board will allow me to do that. 1945, the Government Finance Office Association established the annual Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program to encourage all local governments to take complex financial information and produce a comprehensive financial report each year that provides our citizens with a document that is accessible and it's easy for everyone to understand, even those who are unfamiliar with finances. Unlike Commissioner Ross, he's not unfamiliar with them. He, he creates them. Governments that are able to meet this high standard of program are then recognized by the Government Finance Offices Association. This year, 2021, marks the 30th, I said it 30th, 30th consecutive year that Dare County has received this prestigious Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And we've earned that recognition every single year since our finance director, Mr. David Clausen. Mr. David Clausen, began serving as the county's finance director. It's an amazing accomplishment that highlights the ongoing dedication that David and his staff display every single year, year after year. David's leadership, when it comes to Dare County's financial matters, is absolutely outstanding. And thanks to these three decades of incredible hard work he has put in since, since he first took his position as the finance director. There's no one who's more well-versed in the intricacies of the county's finances than David. So I'm hoping we can award this another thirty years in a row, down the road. He not only manages and oversees the general accounting functions of the county, including everything from payroll and purchase, ordering authorizations, to debt service and payments and revenue collections. He also manages the county's investment portfolio, as you very well know, that is huge. He oversees the budget developments, and he serves as the county's point of contact for architects, engineers, consultants, contractors, a variety of construction projects that are, as we all know, that are going on right now, before, before us, take place here in Dare County, among many, many other duties and responsibilities that he has. He knows the ins and outs of every aspect of Dare County's finances, and that's no small task. And we truly couldn't ask for a more knowledgeable or more experienced individual to serve as our finance director. David, I want to thank you for all of your hard work, your efforts, your dedication, and I'm going to meet you down front for a little presentation, if you don't mind. And also, in addition to his own incredible contributions to Dare County, David has also put together an extremely talented team within our finance department. Sally Defosse serves as our Assistant Finance Director, and she's responsible for accomplishing much of the hard, hands-on work with the budget and finance reporting. She's the person who is primarily responsible for preparing and compiling the reports that have been recognized for meeting and meeting, our meetings, and extremely high standards set by the Government Finance Officers Association. Now Sally wasn't able to be, attend this meeting this morning, so David, once again, when I meet you down front, I have a certificate of achievement that I'd like to present to you for Sally, on Sally's behalf as well. And I want to thank Sally publicly for all her hard work and dedication to Dare County. And thank you to the entire finance department and Dave's staff for their excellent job that everyone on your team does every single day and all throughout the year for Dare County. Those of you who are interested, who are watching today and reviewing our meeting and the, the award-winning document that David and Sally are being recognized here for today, you can find that on our website at www.darenc.com/finances. I encourage everyone to take a moment to go to our website, take a look at this report. It's detailed, which showcases the strong financial health of Dare County. All of you know, maintaining that position is a top priority of this sitting board right here today. And it's something that we will, we take very, very seriously, and we're very proud of achieving this year after year. So David, thank you, I want to meet you down front and make a presentation to you.
Chairman, while you are walking down, I'll echo what the chairman just said, I'll tell you one other thing. Dave is, as you know, is the deputy county manager, too, and serves in my absence. But there are very few decisions that I make that Dave didn't have a hand in. He's my counsel, he's someone that we talk every day multiple times, and so he is a valuable asset, not just in running the finances, but in running the county as a whole. So thank you, Dave, for all that you do.
Dave's running out of space. I don't know where you're putting all these, Dave, but he's running out of space. This is a certificate here of Government Finance Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and it's presented to Dare County of Dare, North Carolina, Dave Clausen, for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year June 30, 2020. And it's signed by the Executive Director, Christopher P. Morelli. Dave, once again, thirty years, incredible, incredible, incredible. And then here's the one for Sally, and once again, it's from the Government Finance Office Association, and it's Award of Financial Reporting Achievement to Sally Defosse, Assistant Finance Director, County of Dare, North Carolina. Once again, it's also signed by Christopher P. Morelli, Executive Director. So y'all need a shot of that, too. Thank you, Dave, appreciate it, man.
Thank you, Dave. It's somewhat easy to get complacent when you get it thirty years in a row, but I will tell you, it is anything but. So again, Dave, I appreciate Mr. Woodard, our chairman's remarks. I've spent a lot of my career in it, and I can comment and congratulate you and your staff. It does not happen accidentally. County Manager, same compliments to you. I know you guys operate this as a very, very well-run financial organization, and I know I, and I'm probably speaking for the board, sleep well at night knowing we've got one hundred percent integrity behind the financials, transparency, and reporting in this county. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and with, with Commissioner Ross's career in finances outside of government is, is second to none. And with his blessing and his oversight, we're fortunate to have on this board, and we really appreciate it, Ross. And thank you for those comments, County Manager.
Yes, sir, next on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is a proclamation for Child Support Awareness Month in August of two thousand twenty-one. With your permission, I'll read that proclamation.
Yes, sir.
Whereas Dare County is recognized, is recognizing August as Child Support Awareness Month and reaffirms its commitment to strengthening Dare County's families by providing child support services to improve the economic stability and well-being of children. And whereas the state fiscal year two thousand twenty-two-one, more than $2.6 million in child support was collected from parents of Dare County children. And whereas there are nearly eight hundred and twenty-seven child support orders in place, working to ensure that more than nine hundred and fifty children receive financial support from their parents. And whereas Child Support Awareness Month salutes the diligent, working parents who spend time with their child and who make regular child support payments to safeguard their child's future. Whereas strengthening individuals and families promotes the safety and well-being of children, provides stability, improves the lives of children, and provides opportunities for families to enhance their children's futures. And whereas children who do not receive adequate financial and emotional support from their parents may experience greater difficulty in becoming healthy, happy, and productive citizens. Whereas many concerned and dedicated judges, district attorneys, clerks of court, sheriff's personnel, and child support professionals work to establish and enforce child support orders for Dare County children, one of, one of our county's most vital resources. Now therefore, we, the Dare County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim August two thousand twenty-one as Child Support Awareness Month in Dare County and commend its observance to all citizens. This the second day of August two thousand twenty-one.
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor to adopt the proclamation, Child Support Awareness Month, August two thousand twenty-one, by the Vice Chairman, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House and Tobin, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Next is your consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have approval of the minutes from the last meeting, and you have the results of an NC DPI Facility Need Survey.
Move to approve.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented, is there a second?
Aye.
Seconded by Commissioner House, I mean, Count, excuse me, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
And then last is your board appointments. You have two this month, no, you have one this month. You have the Parks and Recreation Advisor Council, the Terms of Anita Bills, Willer Spencer, Amanda Hooper Walters, Kathy Carden, George Barr, Robert Parish, Eddie Twine, Stephanie J. Hartness, and Kelly Harmon expirer in July. They have all requested to be reappointed, except Kathy Carden. The advisory committee recommends Helen Fur for the appointment to fill the vac, that vacancy, and that the others be reappointed for another term.
Move to reappoint and to appoint Helen Fur to fill the vacancy.
There's a motion on the floor about a vice chairman to reappoint and appoint Helen Fur for the vacancy. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
And then for your upcoming appointments, in September, you have the Health and Human Services Board, where you have five terms that will be expiring. In October, you have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, which will have two terms expiring. And in November, you have the Older Adults Services Advisory Council with three terms expiring, the Rodanthe Wave Salvo Community Center Board with two terms expiring, and the Stumpy Point Community Center Board with one term expiring. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that would be your agenda.
Thank you, County Manager, that brings us to item fourteen, that's commissioners' business and managers' business, but before we go into that, I noticed we have with us today, Mr. Duke Garrity, Duke's stuck in here the whole meeting, and he's with the home builders. And Duke, would you come forward? I'd like to ask you if you could bring our board up to date on where we stand, where the home builders stand with material costs these days. Are we seeing any improvement at all?
We see a tremendous improvement on framing lumber. But that is about all. Framing lumber's down about sixty percent from the high.
Wow.
So that's your two-by-fours and your two-by-tens. A year and a half ago, a piece of OSB was about nine dollars, that is fifty dollars a board right now. The floor plywood is eighty dollars a board right now. Roof shingles, windows, PVC pipe, tubs, electrical wire has almost tripled, has more than tripled in price in the last year. So when you hear about, well, if the framing lumber's come down, that's one aspect, and it's a big number. But that doesn't make up for the other costs. And we're a different market, you can see different things. Around the country right now, the market, they were, they were seeing record building going on, well, it was record permits, and a lot of builders nationwide were putting in foundations, but they weren't building the houses yet, they weren't framing the houses. Our market here, a lot of it is probably seventy percent investment homes. And the attitude was, they want to keep building, COVID was here, they wanted to have a place that they could come to, but they were going to do is investment property. And they simply just ate it on the rent, hurting our year-round population. It's hurting our remodeling industry. I don't even know how to estimate a job anymore. I've had over, about a million five in jobs that were canceled, that they postponed, postponed, and finally said, we're just not going to do it. I'm pricing, another one now was priced about a year and a half ago, and we were ready to sign a contract. The weekend that, that the COVID lockdown came down, we had to close the bridge, and he decided to postpone it, and he's so sorry he did now because the cost of that house has gone up about a hundred thousand dollars. So, and then we have labor increases, so the shortage of labor, so with this day of a product that you need. And I had to call six plumbers. My plumber decided that after twelve years, he wasn't going to do it anymore. And I had to call six plumbers for a job, and I probably paid about fifteen hundred dollars more for a remodel job. So it's fifteen hundred more than I should have.
How about appliance costs?
I'm sorry?
How about appliances?
You know, I haven't bought any lately, but I know they're up.
Yeah, I heard they're up like fifty percent or so.
It's hard to get them. We had a kitchen remodel I did, and we did the appliances, took about three months to, to get them one at a time. We'd go there and put a stove in, we'd go there and put a microwave in. We don't really have a, except for Manio Furniture, which is a real good company, they're the only real appliance company we have here. And otherwise, you're, you're stuck with what Lowe's has and Home Depot. The few appliances that we picked up, we were able to get them at, you know, in stock at Lowe's. But yeah, I think nationwide is a big problem. I would look at, at the price, electrical wire is because of the, the record high of the price of copper right now. And a roll of wire to do outlets was about thirty-five dollars a roll, and now it's ninety-six. The heavy-duty wire for your air conditioning and your heat, your water heaters, that's all sky-high. So, and there's not much science coming down. What we do know, and I'm on a committee now in National Home Builders Association, Construction Codes and Standards, and there's a lot of pressure coming out of the White House for new energy standards, and that's a new one we're going to have to look at. Some western states, Washington, Oregon, and California is leaning there real soon, and New York City, there'll be no more natural gas, no more propane, you won't be able to get gas this administration. You won't be able to use your barbecue because they want everything to be electric. There's energy standards is the next big thing that's coming up.
Where does electric come from, Duke?
I'm sorry?
Where does electric power come from?
Exactly.
Did they think about that?
Exactly, electric cars.
Right, from the electric tree?
Preaching to the choir.
Well, I, I hear that, and I, I know that.
And the meetings that we've had, it's all been on Zooms, I mean, there's no eye contact. I have, even our building co-councilman in Raleigh, we, it's hard to meet them. Some of the meetings they've had, they've had the audience in one room and the council members in another. So there's no interaction, there's nothing, and all I keep getting is Zoom reports or, and a lot, we got no response at all from the White House. And real quickly, the day before inauguration day, the president's staff called the International Code Council. Now, there's no voting builder members on that code council, but they set the codes now. But we do have members on the committees, and they wanted to know why the energy standards haven't gone up anything but minor changes in the last ten years. And they wanted to know if the national home builders had any undue influence on keeping the standards the way they were. And he, things have been changed. I think, and it's been mentioned, that because we haven't raised the energy standards on housing here, that's one of the reasons the White House was so reluctant to do anything about the price of lumber and the supply chain.
Duke, let me ask you this, I know when I met with you guys about a month or so ago, has the forestry industry picked back up of cutting and, or the manufacturers manufacturing lumber to the standards that they were, were prior to COVID?
The forestry industry didn't ever had a problem with slowdowns. They had plenty of logs with an outside job, they were stockpiled, so I don't think it was the forestry industry. But the mills underestimated what was going to happen, and they shut things down when COVID, thinking there wasn't going to be any building going on. And then the remodeling industry, people working on their houses, it took off. And people decided they wanted to move to a second house, they needed a bigger house. So it was the mills and, and that problem. It's the truck drivers that have to deliver that stuff is where the, it has picked up. Right now, the next thing we're looking at, there's a tariff on every piece of lumber. A lot of our lumber comes from, most of our lumber comes from Canada.
Yeah.
And they're going to double the tariff right now, it's nine percent right now. Trump had it, he lowered it from, I don't remember exactly what it was, but it went, it's nine percent, and next month, I think it's supposed to go to eighteen point two percent.
Wow.
So I mean, you get all this stuff coming out. A lot of the companies from Canada right now are buying properties in the United States, only to say they could be a United States company and, and get out of some of that tariff lumber.
Also, some of the mills, like Blue Ridge Mill and Nant, they had their workers went and got another job, and they've had fan power issues, some of these really big mills.
Well, I know one of the major cabinet manufacturers, Welborn, there was like a four-week turnaround. Now there's a sixteen to twenty-week turnaround to get cabinets.
Yeah, we can't get cabinets right now, doors, interior doors, things like that, the specialty items. They've got to get special lumber for the cabinets, too, they were made out They were made out of maple or cherry.
Right.
So there's a problem there too.
So that sixty percent in those framing materials offsets some of the other costs some, but not enough to?
Yes. We did a remodel, it was extensive, it was foreclosure, and we had to cut the inside, take all the floor joists out of the house and everything. Two-by-fours, and then we did that two months ago. And the two-by-fours for that house were eleven dollars each. And now they're about four fifty. So I mean, the floor joists were, I paid thirty dollars apiece, they're at twelve dollars right now. So that part's helping.
Right.
But the molding has gone up, and interior doors, and the roofing, and plywood. Plywood hasn't budged.
Wow.
It's amazing, we don't know why. But if one person in the factory gets Covid, they were shutting the factories down. So I, you know, whether that's still happening, I don't know.
Got you. Well, thank you for your update.
Thank you.
Duke, I really appreciate it. Hope things start to improve even more down the road. Thank you for that update.
We need to get out there and plant more of those electric trees so we can get more of that electric power.
All right, we're into item fourteen. And Commissioner Tobin, would you kick it off today?
I will kick it off. We, this past Friday, well, actually Thursday, at four-thirty, we left Dare County and ended up in New Orleans at, what time Steve, midnight?
Close to.
Close to midnight. And got up the next morning, drove to Morgan City, and went on a, we had a safety meeting, and then we had a, basically a rundown of where we're at, what they need from us, meeting that went real well. Then we went out and took a tour of the vessel, and the vessel is really coming along great. And we really did well going under contract at the time that we did because as lumber prices go, steel prices are doing the same thing. In our contract, the steel price that we were set to pay was thirty-five cents a pound with an escalation cap at thirty-eight cents a pound. Steel's currently ninety-five cents a pound. So we did good.
Yeah, you did.
But it was a, it was a really, really, really good trip. I have some pictures that we'll have to show at the next meeting though because it was too late to get them in. But we were actually able to walk on the vessel, and the bow sections are just about completed. They'll be moved out into the yard and attached to the mid-body section. The stern sections are just about completed. By the end of August, all that stuff should be put together. There's really no hang-up at all anywhere in the supply chain, except we're having issues trying to get the draghead plans. We're currently working with Congressman Murphy's office and also with Senator Burr's office, trying to get a little bit of pressure put on the corb engineers to turn over either a draghead that we can develop a mold off of, we can do a digital scan of the draghead and copy it, or the mold, or the plans. One of those three things we need so we can adhere to their permit. But that's all I got.
Thank you so much, Jim.
Steve might have had something to add to that, but it was a really good trip.
Appreciate your report. Thank you. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, sir. I just have one item. Tomorrow at two fifteen, I believe, County Manager and I will be on a call regarding a broadband grant proposal from the Economic Development Authority. And I happened to just pull out my North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals and Data Map, and goal number one was broadband.
Yep.
So apparently, EDA has freed up one billion dollars for the Atlanta region, which I guess stretches from Florida all the way to, I don't know, New Jersey, Virginia? I'm not sure of the geographics, but a large extent of rural eastern U.S. is going to be covered by this, and we will investigate whether or not there will be an opportunity to do more for our region. Our Albemarle Commission has six out of ten counties that are below seventy percent coverage in terms of broadband availability. So we'll keep you posted, but I wanted to let you know that was coming up tomorrow.
Infrastructure bill will help you. That's supposed to move pretty quick, the infrastructure bill. There's a nice slice of that for broadband.
Yeah, it's, if you stand back and look, you could see a large green river of money flowing out of Washington, D.C. in every direction. So everyone is gathering with their cups and glasses and buckets. So we shall see. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, our trip down to Conrad Shipbuilding was an enlightening trip. It was actually good to actually see pieces of this vessel together, and you could actually, you know, imagine what it's going to look like now as opposed to just looking at drawings. And yeah, we were able to get up onto the, onto the deck of the hopper section of it, which was a phenomenal view. But I do have to give a large shout-out to those welders. Those guys are having a hundred-and-ten heat index day.
Yeah.
And they're working inside a metal container with full welding gear.
In full sun.
In full sun and welding. If that's not a hot job, I don't know what is. And they're actually going at a pretty good pace. I think they're right at schedule or right, right on schedule for it. So yeah, it was phenomenal to watch, watching you put things together. And they were saying within, what was it, next week, week after, that the sterns will be put on so they'd be even looking even more like a ship. But yeah, it was phenomenal to walk through it. The staff there is well on board with us. They're proud to do this job, and they're really excited about it, and they want to make sure it's done right. So that was, that was our extended trip, and it was well worth it, well worth it. Dave, Sally, your staff, thirty years.
That's the hopper section.
That is remarkable, that not only, working as well as you do and your staff does for thirty years, but also to be acknowledged with this award for all thirty years. That is phenomenal. And I praise you and I praise your staff as well. Thank you. Our day in history. I believe everybody knows John F. Kennedy. President of the United States.
Vaguely.
Vaguely.
No, I'm just kidding. Well aware.
Well aware.
Not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country.
There you go. Lieutenant J.G. John F. Kennedy leaps into the Pacific Ocean after a nightmare, nighttime attack by a Japanese destroyer sunk his command of the PT-109. The future U.S. President swam through burning wreckage and managed to help save all but two of his crew members, leading survivors to an island to await rescue. If you've ever seen the movie PT-109, I would highly recommend it. Although there are some little Hollywoodisms in that movie, but from a lot of the, of the crew of PT-109 said it was very accurate of what they went through. So with that, not only was he the United States President, also a World War II hero, and that was our day in history. Other than that?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd always like to say thank you to the service pen recipients, and this month is an exceptional month, in that ten employees represented a hundred-and-seventy years of service. Just a great big thank you to them. As always, we couldn't, the county couldn't do the work it needs to be done without them. Dave, Sally, thank you. Appreciate you always. Don't retire.
Can we pass a resolution saying you're not retiring?
That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bagel?
So, the presentation or the comment from, got from Kitty Old Kites, it's bad out there, y'all. It's really bad. And I don't, I don't think, you know, housing's going to play a part of it. That's not it. It's people don't want to work. They just don't want to work. I mean, and the folks that, I mean, I had, I had Facebook ads, I put it on a big sign, I called out everybody I know, I called the, I called the Unemployment Security Commission at least every two weeks and say, I need dishwashers, I need waitstaff, I need cooks, I need expeditors, I need groundspeople, I need setup people in the morning. Not one person showed up. People just don't want to work. And we're sitting here in my situation, I talked to Wes Step. Wes has said he cooked seven shifts last week at nighttime, and he's down cooks. He's having to close one of his restaurants for lunch completely. You throw that at you, throw out five thousand dollars a day, that's thirty-five thousand dollars a week that you're giving up in sales automatically. Because people don't want to work, and that's the bad part about it. And then you, then you have, we had one of my competitors, I didn't know who the guy was, came in and was offering people that worked for me twenty dollars an hour. Twenty dollars an hour. You know, I've got loyal, very, very loyal staff, I've got good people. But twenty dollars an hour's a lot of money to pay somebody that you don't even know who they are, but he is so desperate that he's doing stuff like that. So we're, we're in a bad situation, at least for the next four weeks. Go ahead.
I was pressing them, I appreciated their comments, so thank you. I think you encouraged them to do so. But I pressed them on, so you're offering free housing if you will work to be paid. So we're not asking you to work for free. We're going to give you free housing. And the answer was not interested. That, I mean, it stopped me in my tracks. I could hardly believe what I'm, what I was hearing.
He was as honest he could possibly be.
Yeah, and you're reinforcing this to?
The other issue we have next year, and I'm sure Attorney Allen knows all about this, but the J-one students next year, in order to qualify for their sponsorship program, you have to supply adequate housing for each student. When they do the sponsorship program, they call me up, okay, Irvin, you need six guys? Yes, sir. Where are you going to put them at? And you have to have them in approved housing. So I have to have housing for every J-one student who comes in front of me next year.
Is that even possible for everyone who would be seeking?
The bad part about this is, is that out of the four rentals that I have, I'm going to, in order to have employees, am I going to kick out a full-time resident rental to put someone in my house? What choice do I have? I need the employees.
And why are the J-one visa applicants not here this year?
Covid. Covid just completely screwed it up. We, we, we normally get China, we normally get Taiwan, we normally get Russian. We got none of those this year. I got two Mongolian kids, hard workers.
Seems bizarre, because there are tens of thousands walking in every day south, are they not, of people?
I don't.
Tens of thousands are walking in the southern border, and we're stopping J-one visa students.
Well, and the Guatemalans, which is the major people that are coming in there, I will tell you this, they're coming, they only work for cash because they have no social security cards, and legally I cannot employ anybody like that. They're not doing me any good.
So let me ask you this.
This is upside down.
Aside from not being?
Am I not right?
This is crazy.
Yes, you are. I'm not sure which issue you're talking about, but I think all of them are right.
Aside from not being, say you can't offer housing. And you, J-one students, if you could, you could get as many of them as you want, if you could provide housing next year, you can get as many of them as you need, would that solve your employment issues that you have?
It would make it a lot better. You got to do what you got, you got to think on your feet, got to do what you got to do. So what we did this year, well, I went to the high schools, and I have high school kids, sixteen-years-old, hostesses that are fifteen that jumped up the plate and seating tables, doing salad positions in the back, you know, ruining food, stuff like that. They picked up the pace of washing dishes that before my J-one students did. But this one, this past week, I lost six weights. And then in two weeks, when the school starts back, I'm going to lose eight, because I have eight young kids coming up. The positive thing for me is those young kids coming up, eventually they're going to, when they go through the system, if they get one year of college, I'll let them wait tables, there'll be waitresses and waiters at some time.
Now, you hit me with something that really struck home, and that is you can't get workers because they don't want to work. And so what if, what if we solved the housing issue? Are we still going to be faced with that?
I think we are. I think we are. Listen, it's, I can hire the under-twenty-five-year-old person, but the twenty-five to thirty-five-year-old, they don't want to work.
They're getting paid by the government.
Yeah, and they haven't got to work, you know.
They don't send you to work.
It's, it's just a bad situation. And I don't, you know, I'm just going to tell you that just the, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying, because I just know my situation, but like, I would use Wes. You know, Wes is a hard-working, good guy, gives back to the community. If he's working seven shifts a night, he's, he's working eighty to eighty-five hours a week. You can only do that so long, and all of a sudden, it just all falls apart, the wheels come off.
Your health slows to go.
Yeah, the wheels come off. And then it's just bad. That's not, that's not what I signed up for.
I'm in the same boat. I mean, I've, I've actually offered people over, over twenty dollars an hour, and I can't get them to?
Were you the one sitting at my bar?
No. I don't have time to sit in your bar. I mean, because, you know, with my company, I'm on call twenty-four-seven. So like this trip, I had to take, you know, down to Louisiana to, to, to look at the dredge. I had to shut my company down for two days because I don't have anybody here to, to work.
Well, I, I mean, that concerns me with this board, as y'all all well know, we have been working very, very diligently to try to get something going with, with at least a stab at workforce and essential housing. And of course, we had that one project that they claimed that once it was built, they'd have it full in, in two weeks. I'm, you know, with what you're telling me, I'm certainly hoping that's still going to be the case down the road if we come to some, some sort of an agreement to, to build something or have something built. But we're just, and I've said this publicly, and I've said this to you individually as commissioners, that we're not going to get workforce or essential housing done unless I see two things happen, and that is attitudes change from the municipality level as well as us about not in your, in my backyard, and then we've got to have skin in the game. We've got to have money in the game. And that's the only way I see it happening. You know, prove me wrong, but I just really strongly believe that. And everything I've seen today is not in my backyard, and it's very, very discouraging from, from a municipal standpoint.
And I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. You know, look at all the changes we've made to our zoning for the unincorporated areas of Dare. And we've repeatedly asked the towns to take a look at it and follow our lead, and they're just turning a blind eye. So it's, it's very frustrating.
I will allude to something that Lee said, and this is not, our economy's not going to keep going as it is right now. We're post-Covid, so to speak. So if next year the business is not as extreme, because we're doing much more, it's more than we've ever done in business-wise, and so we have less help. It's, it's just a perfect storm far as business is concerned down here. We get the J-ones back next year, we have ten percent less in business, we might be okay. I still have my high school kids coming in, you know, things can change. And that's what we just hope for. I hate to say you hope you drop ten percent in business, but you ask anybody, ask the guys at Kitty Old Kites, they'll tell you they'd be happy just to be a little bit down because it's stressful.
What's that ten percent drop predicated on? I mean, nobody knows.
I'm just throwing it.
What's the predicate? There is none. It's just pulling something out of the air.
That's it?
Well, well, we got our challenges, guys.
That's for sure.
Well, we're not supposed to be doing the business we're doing right now. Which, I mean, it just, I've never done the business I'm doing right this minute. If you ask at the Terrace Bureau, all those numbers that come back with up, up 1,000% in property management over the previous 2019? I'm not talking about 2020. I'm talking about 2019, there are 1,000% in property management. That's unheard of.
That's more than...
That's it.
That's incredible.
Even you looking at the ROD, I mean, uh, we doubled, we're doubling on land transfer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gross revenue.
Thank you, Commissioner Ben. Commissioner Couch?
Uh, yes, uh, we lost a young man, very tragic, tragic accident, uh, down in Frisco. It's really kind of hammered the community down there. If you look at the obituary for this young man, his name was Trey Farrow, uh, the big smiling face, that, that was him. And, uh, my heart really goes out to his grandfather, Roy Farrow's a friend of mine, the whole family. It's affected the kids, it's affected the parents. It's just, it's just an awful, awful thing. And it's taken a while to come, come to grips with it. It's beautiful, beautiful young man. Whole life in front of him, highly skilled, uh, things he could do, he's a natural. I mean, you always want to encourage somebody like that to get, to become an engineer. He was just gotten out of high school and, you know, kind of taking stock of what he's going to do with his life. And it was just a day on the beach and having some fun that got out of hand, and it's just very crushing. And I'm just going to leave it at that. That's, thank you.
All right, well, we'll keep that family in our thoughts and prayers, Commissioner. Thank you. County manager, come to you.
Yes, sir. I have several things. At our meeting, you all approved a contract, it was called the NOBE4 contract, for some training services. In the two weeks since we met last, Matt came to me. When we did that contract, we calculated, we asked for a quote based on 700 employees using the, the system, and they quote you by the employee. When they sent the quote in, they quoted a portion of that at only 110, and they didn't cover the other 600 employees that we needed on there. And so we've been back and forth. Matt had negotiated a very good price for us anyway. It came before you all because it was a multi-year contract. To, to get the other employees on here was something like $10,000,000. And Matt has talked to them and told them where we stand. And, and basically, for $1,000, they'll add those other employees. And so rather than go back and forth a whole bunch more times, we're asking permission to move forward with that contract and amend it to add the employees that we need, and we'll increase that amount by $1,000.
Need a motion?
I do.
Motion.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
We spent a bunch of time this morning talking about workforce and affordable or essential housing. And in moving our projects along, as you know, when DFI came and spoke to you, we needed to get an architect involved in order to go in and cost out renovations that we needed to make the Elizabethan, if we're going to proceed with that, Lytec eligible, if you will. And also to look at our Bowser Town project and come up with some combination of room, Lytec versus non-Lytec rental rates to balance that out. So we meet the two markets we're trying to do and get the most bang for our buck. She sent out proposals to various architects to try to get that. She came back with three. And I'll talk to you about those just for a second. I apologize that you all haven't seen it, because I didn't get them until the end of the week last week. One was for a group called Dunn and Dalton Architects. They're out of Kent, in North Carolina. They had a lot of renovation experience. I mean, I've got a big thing here, and they've taken a lot of old buildings and turned them into apartments. But really couldn't discern how much Lytec that was and how much just market rate apartments that was. DFI told me that they do Lytec work, but from what they sent, it's hard to sort of break it down. They do a lot of other stuff. There's fire departments and all kinds of things, downtown redevelopment, all kinds of historic buildings and things that they've done. They had a cost of about $28,000 to do what we were asking them to do. There was another company called Ross and Deckard. They're out of Raleigh. They have done a tremendous amount of Lytec work. I mean, there's, I mean, the list is a lot. I mean, 100 or more Lytec properties, I think, on here. So they have very, a lot of experience doing what we're asking them to do. They're expensive. They want $44,500 to do what we ask them to do on just those two projects. And then there was a third one called Tyson, Tyse and Keister out of Chapel Hill. Their price was about $9,000, which was a good price. So I went through to look at what they've done. They have done a number of Lytec projects. They're all smaller projects, 30 to 60 units, something right in the wheelhouse of what we're doing. And based on the price and based on what their experience is and what they've done, that would be the group that I would recommend. We're looking to get numbers to plan on. We don't need to spend nearly $50,000 to get planning numbers. This is a reasonable amount to pay, and they have lots of experience doing it. So my recommendation to you is that we move forward with that so that we can keep this rolling. I know the chairman and others of you are anxious to get something going and have really been pushing me hard and pushing our consultants hard to get something rolling. We've spent a lot of time on this. If we choose to do this today, this will keep us moving. If you're inclined to do that, then as we did before, I need you to exempt ourselves from the Mini Brooks Act for architects under $50,000. And if you will approve that, then approve Tyson, Keister, and then authorize me to do whatever budget amendments I need to do to pay for this.
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve that by Commissioner House. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Tobin and Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion?
I, I just want to add one thing. We've all said it numerous times. We need something, and we need it now. We've been talking about this for almost two years, and it feels like we're in the same place we were. I want to see something. And I want to see it very soon, much sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Anyone else? Okay, with the motion on the floor, those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
One last thing on the affordable housing front. The chairman brought it up earlier. Commissioner Ross has brought it up a number of times. I had a developer call me earlier in the week, brought it up, and DFI has brought it up. And, and that is, what resources are we prepared to commit? And, and it's really hard for anybody to project forward, for us to do other things and look at other things if we don't know how much money we need to spend. And so at some point, we need, as a body, to sit down and say, we're going to put X number of dollars in affordable housing. Now, how can we move it forward? I don't mean do that at the expense of where we are or to slow down what we are. But, you know, if, if we've got to put some money in, are we going to figure that out one project at a time? Or are we going to create a fund, and out of that fund, we're going to keep investing in affordable housing going forward? And those are decisions that we've got to make at some point, if we're going to do anything to impact it. It's what we've got on the board we desperately need is going to be a great thing to do, but it's a drop in the bucket to the overall need. And if we're going to move that need needle, then we've got to make some decisions going forward. The next thing on my agenda is most, many of you, I don't know if all of you have gotten phone calls or emails or whatever about stormwater issues on the north end of Roanoke Island. And we got them when it rained hard, we got them anyway, but it sort of came to a head over the last month or so with something that was going to be as simple as moving a pipe from one part of a lot to another part of a lot. Well, when we, when the owner of that lot began moving that pipe, it uncovered a lot of things that we didn't know until they moved that pipe. I went out there and walked it. I know that Commissioner Oberman's been out there and walked it. I think Commissioner Tobin walked it. Some of the others, the chairman, some of the others may have been out there. Some of you may have talked to the people out there. But the long and the short of it is, moving that pipe, we found that where that pipe was connected, connected into another pipe that doesn't operate, it's clogged up, it doesn't work. And it's not in the easement where it's supposed to be. And it was put in, gosh, 40 years ago. We don't know how it was put in or what, but it's there. And as you walk through that subdivision, that pipe, even if it were connected, drains into an open ditch. And then that open ditch flows somewhere else through zigzags through 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 houses. It hits another pipe, as well as spreads out to the east and the west, or the north and the south, I guess, in open ditches in front of people's houses. Goes under the road and then connects into an open ditch that runs to a pipe that runs back across the airport and then ultimately out in the sound. And so what we have is a convoluted mess.
Not making this up. This is for...
I've been out there. It's a mess.
This is for real.
Yeah, I saw it too.
The person...
It's just bad.
This is for real. We, we did this hydrology study.
And, no, no.
No, this is different.
That was, that was further than...
This is part of that, but this is not what I'm talking about.
Sorry.
This is over medium issue. So the person putting the pipe in, in the initial, wanted me to allow them to just empty that pipe into the ditch and bypass that clogged-up pipe. And I wouldn't let them do that because I didn't know what that was going to do downstream. I said, he said, well, that pipe's been clogged up. I said, well, that means they're not getting any water. And now they're going to get some, and we don't know how much, nor do we know what that's going to do to all of those property owners. And so they got an engineer, and the engineer called me, and, and we went through it. And he didn't really answer the questions that I had, and he went back and did it again. And the long and the short of it is, he believes that if we went in and put a culverted pipe through all of those open ditches and took that system, and we could improve all of that in that area, and that makes sense. And it would straighten everything out, it would do away with those open ditches, and it would make that water flow into the outfall that goes ultimately out into the sound. When this first began, we didn't really want to do that until we did our county-wide stormwater study, because we don't know if that's the priority or not the priority. But where we are now is we've got this pipe that's been moved, it's sitting in a, a connection, a concrete joint. I forget what they call the connector.
Junction box.
Junction box. And they don't know whether to go left and then right to hook it into the old pipe that's clogged up or to go straight into the ditch. And so it's stopped at our request till we figure out what we want to do. With all that said, we just hired the county engineer. There's project number one. Is if we want to go forward with that, let's get something engineered so that we can stand up in front of the people that live out there and tell them, we're not doing anything to negatively impact them with this water. Otherwise, whatever we do, if they ever flood, they're going to swear it was because of what we did moving this pipe, whether it is or it isn't, because it, we don't have the engineer with the P signing off telling us how all this is going to work. We don't have a budget for any of this. And so are we going to go forward and do this? If we are, then I need to get some estimates and, and, and we'll just do it. And we'll, Dave and I'll figure out how to pay for it and come back to you with that. But we need to decide if this is a project we want to do, or is this a project we're going to wait until we have a county-wide stormwater plan, and that's going to be a year away.
Well, we, we, we've dealt with this for several, once again, several years. We need, we need to get an estimate of that connection, but in the same breath, we need to get an estimate of truly cleaning out that ditch that goes to those people's properties and goes over the airport where it goes. Because I've been over there, and it, we got tree limbs growing over the, God bless it, thing that deep. I mean, that big around. And, and, and it needs to, it needs to be cleaned out. It's never been cleaned out since it was done.
The discussion I had was to culvert all of that, so we didn't have that issue.
And, and we talked about that. You and I talked about that, and get some estimates and see what it's going to cost to get it done, because...
But one thing's certain, it don't make any sense to hook into a pipe that's clogged.
That's right. That's exactly right. Yeah.
I ain't real smart, but I figured that's what you had at...
Right, absolutely.
That's brilliant.
Uh, one thing, it...
Thank you very much.
It'll solve that immediately, but it will also solve, it, it should help those folks over on Daphne Lane, because that's where that...
Right.
I don't know what it'll do up in Breakwood, because I don't know how interconnected all that is. But it'll certainly solve, not solve, but it'll help them because it'll improve their flow. And they were one of the areas that were heavily impacted when we had problems.
Well, you know, poor guy's over in Daphne, he was pumping it out of his yard across the street into the ditch. It was coming all the way down to airport.
Was doing a circle.
It was doing a circle. So he was doing nothing but pumping it in a circle?
Because that pipe that took it out was clogged.
And, and he didn't know that, you know?
Well, nobody, we didn't even know there was a pipe there until we got rid of... There was no indication that there was a pipe there or anything there until this property owner, subdivided the property, was getting ready to sell the lot, and he found there was a junction box with a pipe connected. We had our water guys go over there with their ground radar to see if there was a pipe. And sure enough, there was. And that's how we figured it out. Had that not occurred, we still wouldn't know that all that was...
So how quick can we get DeLucia on this one?
Uh, we, well, I can call him today.
Yes.
Yeah, I've got a cell phone.
Yeah. And I don't know how long it'll take. He's, he's got some work. David Ryan had done some work on it, and I'll hook them up and, and...
Yeah, David's an expert in this.
Yeah, well, he's done, he was the guy that I was talking to, and, and he's run the models and says the culvert plan can work. But we need somebody, we're going to pay for it. We need somebody that we hire and that can stand up and answer your questions, answer questions in the public. And then certainly before we go out there and start digging in our easement, even though we have every right to, we need to go talk to those six property owners, because we're going to be going in between their houses, doing some work, and they need to know what and why. And they'll have questions, and we need to have John be able to answer those questions.
Bobby, his, his recommendation, though, was to contain the water, right? Not just put it in the open ditch, but to contain it.
Actually, yeah. Well, he said you could do it either way. He's, I asked him specifically, what if we, what if we used culverts in those pipes between those houses? Would that improve it? And he said, yes. My concern was, was that if we use open ditches, even if we didn't create the flow problem, if they flood and those ditches fill up because there's too much water coming into the system from somewhere else, we're going to get blamed for the problem. Whereas if we culvert it, then they can't say that the water that's coming through from other places is creating their flood event, because it, it isn't. It isn't escaping the system till it gets to the sound. So that was...
Well, one of the complaints was erosion of the ditch walls, too.
Well, right. Yeah.
Ditches in there.
All of them in there.
All of, all of, they were there, but we never even knew they were ours. And we didn't, no one has ever maintained them, and they're just, they're, you know, on our property, on the land we own. We did ma, we cleaned ours up, but these are not ones that are on our property. So, but anyway, we do have an easement. We found the paperwork for that. And so we can do the things that we need to do to solve it, and I'll get some numbers with the board's permission.
Good.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. So I'm going to move in that direction. I'll bring you back numbers for your formal approval there, and, uh...
Think it's possible to get back to us by the 16th?
Uh, I'll make every effort, but I have no idea how much work John has to do to figure all that out. Okay. And then the last thing that I have is, over at Westcat Park, along the boundary, there's a row of houses. As you come into Westcat Park, if you, when you turn in, if you look to the left, there's a row of houses all the way down the property line, as you're facing in Westcat Park on the left. Three or four of those houses are owned by one property owner who owns a larger house down there, and he rents those houses. And he's been coming to me now for more than a year, asking us to put a fence up between our property and his property. He says the kids from that neighborhood and other neighborhoods are cutting through those rental properties that he owns and riding bikes through there. He says they've even ridden motorbikes through there to get over to Westcat Park to use the recreation facilities or to ride them over there on that other site where you and I saw them that day.
Right.
And he wanted us to put a fence up. And, and my first reaction was, if you've got a problem with people crossing your property, why don't you put a fence up? Anyway, we went back and forth a number of times about that. He, he says we have a light stanchion where the lights for the baseball field are that is on his... is on his side of the property line. He's willing to let us keep it there. Presumably if we don't help him with the fence, he's gonna make us move it. It's about a wash to move the light or build the fence, so it's not a financial issue for us, one way or the other. But anyway, we went back and forth and he and I concluded that it was part our problem and part his problem and he agreed to pay some of that cost if we were willing to have the fence put up. Sum is, I don't know what yet, we haven't gotten that far, but the total price of the fence is $7,256 and I told him before I was gonna move forward because I don't know, you know, if the families of those kids who are cutting through those lots to get there are gonna complain or not. I wanted you all to know what we were doing and make sure we were good to go, so we'll move forward. I'll work out some split on that, but authorize me to spend up to $7256 out of the contingency.
Can you get him to split it 50/50?
I don't know. I'll try.
Well, from a liability standpoint, it's cheap insurance.
Yep.
So, so yeah.
Yep.
So I don't need a vote to take that out of contingency, but I do, did want you to know what I was doing in case you got phone calls and if y'all had any feedback that was different, then please tell me now and I'll, I'll slow down.
I'm good.
Ward good?
Yeah. Good.
Okay. With that, last thing I'll say is today's been a good meeting in the sense that you got to see two departments that we have, the Finance Department and our tax collectors and they have something to show you for the fantastic work they do. I think that mimics what we do in many of our other departments. I'm so proud of our staff, our departments and our department heads, they all do tremendous work. These were two of those departments today and again, I wanna commend them, but I wanna commend all the rest of our folks because they're doing similar things in their departments as well.
I wanna, Bobby, piggyback on that and a shout out to our trash collectors. Man, those guys are, we're dealing with records amount of trash, but they're just, I mean, they're machines. I'm really proud of them.
And in that department, they're shorthanded and they're busting it right now. They're doing a great job and Shannon's got it, got it going over there and.
Can't hire guys there either, I guess.
Can't.
Yeah.
You know, and we get somebody complaining because we've got, you know, the recycle center turned, shut down and all that because we're using those drivers to pick up trash. That's a true statement, we do, but with the staff we have, she's stretching it as far as we can and doing fantastic and those guys are unbelievable when they get up at 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock in the morning to get on the trash truck. I met one out at the pump last week and he was filling up, it was about 11:30. I was filling up so y'all could use the, and he was as, he was happy as he could be telling me how busy he was. He'd gotten a different truck and it was a little slower than his old truck. I mean, so those guys are tremendous and so can't say enough of your things.
You know, along those lines, we've got great personnel that step up to the plate and we step up to the plate. And you know, perfect example, Friday, you know, Superintendent Halleck and I went down a week or so ago and met with the folks in Rodanthe at their annual meeting and talked to him about, he talked to him about what's going on in Park Service and I talked to him about what's going on in the county and, you know, they, they have concerns about different issues and things and that, one of them was a recycle. Well, then, then Friday, I get a call from the past president saying, hey, you know, Bob, we've got some serious issues down here. Danny, I know you've experienced it with, you know, you got a 35 mile an hour speed limit and people are going through that 50, 50 plus miles an hour and is any way could, can we get a, something going on down here, a message board to get up and, you know, say speed limit 35, dah 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 dah. Well, I immediately called Bobby because I know that we have, we picked up a couple of extra ones, message boards at emergency management and it, after talking with Bobby, we had lent one to Southern Shores and somebody destroyed it, running into it, brand new. So hopefully we're getting that replaced, but Bobby says, well, we've got it down, down there and it's being used, but it should be used by the end of the day. We'll have it, we'll have it set up this evening or either tomorrow morning. Later Friday evening, 8 o'clock or so, Bobby texts me and says, it's been installed, the message is there and it was done at 6:30. So, I mean, we step up to the plate, we do what people ask us to do all the time and hopefully, I'm hoping, have you seen that, traveling back and forth?
Yes, I have.
I'm hoping that's gonna slow the traffic down some and help those folks in Rodanthe. But my point in bringing this up is we respond and we, we try to respond in a timely manner and, and, and try to put the issue to bed as quickly as possible and that's what's so great about our staff and our people and their willingness to do that.
Sheriff's Department as well, they're enforcing the traffic laws, Dare County Sheriff's Department and also the Highway Patrol. You're gonna get a ticket and if you're doing something stupid.
I could, I could go through each department. I have a place on our staff meeting every month, it's accolades and as we get emails or phone calls or whatever for the accolades that we get for our staff, I share them with the rest of the staff. One, to commend the staff that got the accolade, but two, to encourage the other staff to do things they need to do to get accolades and we've got them in just about every department over time, from the library to the sheriff, you name it. You wouldn't think we'd get many from the Sheriff's Department when they're arresting people, but believe it or not, we do and so there's not been a month gone by that we hadn't had somebody from some departments. Again, I just, those two departments we had this morning do great work and got the recognition they deserve, but we have a lot of departments that do a lot of good things and I want those folks to understand we are aware of it, too.
Absolutely. Thank you, County Manager.
I just had one quick question. I was gonna raise this earlier with Becky when she was going through the tax report and it's really just a question. If you looked at that 10-year trend for seven years from 2010 on, it was virtually a de minimis amount not being collected and I saw that the percentage had just been amended to 99.75, which again is outstanding, no question. But if you just look at the dollar amount, it's gone from that 30,000 or 40,000 a year to, I think it was 80,000 or 90,000 in 19, 100 and something thousand in 20 and 270,000 in 21. And just that, I didn't know if that was indicative of something, if there was an underlying pattern. I was gonna ask Becky and I thought, I'll let it go.
Per schedule or cumulative, so those older years, like the seventh year back is seven years of collections. The first year back's only one. So every year, they collect part of that and that AR balance goes down and down and down.
Oh, well, there you go. If I read the graph and display correctly, then my question'd be answered. I didn't know that at all. I thought that was each individual's year's outstanding balance.
And I'll tell you that when Becky started, we sat down and we had a long conversation about what we were gonna do and how we were gonna do it and we put some parameters in place in the sense that one, everybody needs to be fed from the same spoon, we're gonna treat everybody the same, we're gonna do all the things and I was preaching to the choir, she knows all that stuff. But what we also did is we went back and said, okay, some of this stuff that's getting close to 10 years old where you can't collect anymore, let's get on it.
Right.
And at that time, we hired Zikeas at no cost to us to come in and take those old accounts and work them and see what we could do. Let's collect them if we can, if we can't, then let's, I don't think we can write them off, but let's, let the times expire and we won't worry about them anymore and we have, these are, a lot of those are parcels that nobody knows who owns them, they have very little value, they, the cumulative effect creates the number you're talking about. And she's done a remarkable job cleaning up all of, a lot of that old stuff that we had lingering around and we don't have a lot of that anymore. That number you got is big. In 10 years, the first one drops off, but the other ones add on, so that number's gonna remain moving because as you lose some, you're gonna gain some as well.
But if I understand, that 270-something as we collect will be 10 years from now, might be 30.
Right. And if you go back eight or nine years, that 270 was closer to a million.
There's, that's excellent. That, I missed that in reading the chart. I don't know if you guys all understood that. I did not.
Yeah, at one point, there was closer to a couple of million, right?
Yeah.
That was outstanding.
Stellar.
That's what, we said, we can't let 2 million sit there because that's not fair to our other taxpayers. We gotta get that to keep our rates low, so.
There you go.
Yep.
All right, thank you, County Manager. Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, you have anything else for us today?
Just thank you, all of you and weak bacon for it because it's important to you and it does take time, but.
Yeah, well.
And I'll pass those along.
We couldn't be more pleased, I can tell you that. Our Public Information Officer, Ms. Hester, is out of town and we have the pleasure of having Ms. Stephanie, our staff member, sit in with us today. Do you have anything good for the Board today, Stephanie, to share with us? Well, thank you for all your help with your notes on financing and putting those plaques together for me to present today. Appreciate it. All right, with that being said, I need a motion to adjourn until 5:00 PM on August the 16th.
So moved.
Been motion on the floor by Commissioner House, been seconded by Commissioner Ross.
I'm exhausted.
Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries.